I sort of vibrate a little bit. Good evening, welcome to the Peoria City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 22nd. Would you please rise, join us in a moment of silence, and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Rivera.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor Barrett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ames.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Patana.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Carlat.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
Council Liaison Jelenic.
Here.
And Council Liaison Pryor.
Here.
Thank you. This is the final call to submit speaker request forms. The speaker request forms can be found in the back in the lobby. Fill them out, give them to the clerk, as you're doing now, I guess, and we will call upon you at the appropriate time. Thank you very much. First item up is the Hero Award presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. On behalf of United Blood Services and the patients we serve, we wanted to sincerely thank you guys so much for the support of the city of Peoria blood drives. Out of 1,100 organizations, there's only a select few that win these awards on an annual basis. Our Valentines for Life Awards are from coordinators who are key influencers of success of organization-sponsored blood drives. These awards were established to recognize the efforts of those coordinators and the organizations that reach significant milestones in recruiting blood donors through education and inspiration. So through Norma Bonansky and Bo Larson, your organization was able to achieve our top honor. We go from bronze, silver, gold, up to the platinum award level. Only 58 groups were able to achieve this honor, and you guys were the only municipality. So congratulations for that. And then also, I wanted to share with you guys that our most coveted and difficult-to-earn award is the Hero Award. This award is based on the blood drives that are held, when they're held, and the significant contribution that you're making to our Valley patients. So over the three blood drives that were held at the Police Safety and Administration Building, over 250 units were collected, and over 70 successful donations took place with each drive. We thank you so much. This is the third year running that you guys have achieved this award, and again, you guys were the only municipal group beating out the city of Phoenix, Mesa, Flagstaff, and much smaller communities that have a very high level of participation. So also, we will be having one of our next city-sponsored blood drives this Saturday at our Relay for Life event. The hours will be 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and we thank you guys so much. We look forward to your continued support. (applause).
Thank you.
Thank you. The Consent Agenda are all items that are marked with a C. They will be considered, they're considered to be routine, or they've been previously reviewed by the council. We will enact them in one motion unless a council member asks for an item to be removed. Mr. Leoni.
Yes, I'd like to take off 10C. This is an important position, and I don't think we should just pass it through the Consent Agenda. I feel that we should vote on it. Thank you.
Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take 8C for discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Leoni again. Mr. Leoni, do you have another one you want to pull off? Did you have another one you wanted to pull off?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, for the Consent Agenda, we will vote in one motion on all items except for 8C and 10C. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ames, second by Ms. Carlat. We're gonna have to do a voice vote. The voting isn't working. Go ahead.
Councilmember Rivera.
She's calling the roll now.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Patana.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ames.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlat.
Yes.
Councilmember Leoni.
Yes.
You voted against all the...
There was a consent.
That's all right, we'll move on. 8Cs, Contract Amendment, Valley Rain Construction, Skunk Creek Trailhead, 83rd Avenue and Skunk Creek Bridge.
Ed Strifler from our Ring Department will make a brief presentation on this item.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, I'll give you a quick history of where we've been with this project with our partner agency, the Maricopa County Flood Control District. Talk a little bit about the amenities planned for the trailhead, the budget, some budget challenges we faced, the schedule for the project, and then conclude with our staff recommendation, and of course, Q and A from the council. A little bit of history about the Skunk Creek Trailhead. In late 2009, the city and the Flood Control District reached agreement on the concept of an equestrian trailhead facility located across, along the Skunk Creek Channel near the Peoria Sports Complex. In spring of 2011, we reached out, presented a conceptual design in a public meeting, and the district then identified some safety rail requirements that caught us off guard. We then, during the course of design, began discussions about what those meant to our project. In the second half of 2012, ADOT, the Flood Control District, the city of Peoria, we largely concluded our permitting processes, but this issue of a railing was still a financial challenge to overcome. So we put the project in a pause status while we undertook some agency-to-agency discussions, looking for the means to pull these rails back into fiscal alignment with our means, explore cost-sharing opportunities, et cetera. For the benefit of the council and the viewing public, this project is located on the south side of the Skunk Creek Channel, on the east side of 83rd Avenue. Just to the north of this location, you would arrive at the formerly-named Polar Ice Facility and the Peoria Sports Complex. Some of the amenities planned for this location are an equestrian-themed entry gateway with city-branded signage, deceleration lane for our large wheelbase horse-trailer patrons, large gravel parking lot with long pull-through parking spaces, again, to accommodate the horse trailers, equestrian warm-up pen, mounting block and watering trough for the equestrians, a river channel bird habitat overlook. In the top part of your image, you see a lot of green in the river channel. That's a bird habitat that many people enjoy, looking at our different bird species. And last, a covered picnic ramada and drinking fountain. We had some budget challenges. First of all, we're on the other end of the recession, that's a good thing, but with that came some greater vitality in our subcontractor market, so many of the savings that we would have arrived by executing the project a few years ago, the market has caught up with us. The deceleration lane in 83rd Avenue right-of-way wasn't an intended expense, but we certainly concede to its necessity. Underpass lighting at the ADOT Loop 101 Bridge and the Peoria 83rd Avenue Bridges are being undertaken as an extension of this trailhead project, so that will add additional lighting to our trail underpasses under our major thoroughfares. The safety railing construction beyond the trailhead east to 75th Avenue was a budget challenge, and the cost of the safety railing itself and the attachment means to the stabilized embankments is something that we struggle to work through with the district. A picture's worth a thousand words, so I thought I would help the council better understand what we're dealing with. This is an example of our new river corridor, and certainly you can see existing railings, but you see a gate that very prominently suggests that this isn't for the public to use. Certainly, you can walk up and down it, but it doesn't lend itself to fast bicycle riding, rollerblading, or stroller jogging. When we improve, and in this situation, it's all of Avenue Underpass, you can see that we invite much faster traffic along the river's edge, and that steep embankment is what the Flood Control District is looking to protect, to keep folks from descending down into the river bottom unintentionally. We also plan various amenities along the trail, and when we do so, we invite the potential for parents to remove children from strollers, or take a break on their bicycle to have a drink, and in doing so, they can travel over to the river's edge. And again, the district and the city would both like to keep those toddlers out of the river bottom. At the Peoria Avenue Underpass in the image that you see here, when we descend down in under an underpass, there's a long distance for a bicycle to ascend rapidly, and in doing so, we invite additional hazards for people who lose control, and again, may end up in the bottom of the river. So moving over to the Skunk Creek situation, we don't have quite a sheer of river cliffs or river embankments, but we do have this rather rocky, unstable river's edge, and a lot of turns and weaves along the river. So the Flood Control District's position was, we needed to add safety rail along here since we're inviting faster traffic on bicycles, rollerblades, et cetera. So what are our options for that railing? Right now, we're evaluating a couple of options. We are moving, with your permission, we'll move forward into construction, and we'll hope to finalize the railing real-time as we award it to the subcontractor and begin construction. But we can proceed forward with a traditional railing like we see other places along the river's edge. That would be your standard tubular gray metal handrail, and in some cases, it has chain-link fabric attached to it at the lower levels, that's to keep the children from passing through the rails, and those locations depend on the relative steepness of the river's edge. Another alternative that we're looking at as a means of reducing some costs yet further would be to take the approach like we took at Rio Vista, which is a more natural, rusty, patinaed metal, and tie it together with the Rio Vista facility, which is just on the other side of the bridge. So here, you can see our entry gateway to Rio Vista and some fencing there. So that's another alternative that we're evaluating. Which option we pick is still undecided, but we have both captured from a cost standpoint in the council communication and ultimately in the contractor's price. So on the matter of budget, overall, the project will tally up to just over a million and a half dollars. The award tonight to Valley Rain Construction is approximately 1.1 million. They are our job-order construction contractor. And if approved, we would commence construction in the month of May, once we issue the last of the permits, with the goal of being complete in late summer. Staff's recommendation is to approve the job-order contract to Valley Rain Construction in amount just above 1.1 million, and the corresponding budget adjustment to fully fund this project. I'd like to take a minute and just share some details that Community Services Director John Sefton gave to me, and that's that in our citizen survey undertaken in May of last year, some statistics are interesting. 67% of households used the city of Peoria parks during the last 12 months prior to the survey, and 48% have used the city of Peoria trails. So it's great that they're being used. The parks and the recreation facilities that the highest percentage of households have a need for are the walking and biking trails, and that's the top bar on the diagram that you see. And at 71% of our survey respondents have telegraphed out, that's over 40,000 households that we believe have, you know, a need and a use for the trail system based on the survey results. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the project.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you answer a question? So the arrangement that we have between the city and the flood control allows us to construct the rails, and in that case, use the full amenity of the trail. What happens if we don't build the rails to the way the flood control is requiring us to do so? Will we still have access to those trails?
We have an intergovernmental arrangement with, an intergovernmental agreement with the Flood Control District. That requires us to submit to review by them of the plans that we have. They ultimately must permit our improvements to the land that is theirs, and should we choose not to pursue the railing, it is within their rights to choose not to issue a permit for these improvements. We anticipate that that would be the outcome in this case.
So potentially, we could lose the use of a portion of our trails because we don't put up safety railing?
That is correct.
Is that your consensus?
That is correct.
Okay. In the presentation, you stated that the project was put on hold. How do we finally resolve the railing issues? I know you're working with flood control. What I'd like to see is some kind of public meetings, you know, once you guys come up with some design. You mentioned you had two or three different options. I'd like to have some outreach to the residents, because I have heard from several residents that they're concerned that the railing is gonna be too intrusive and not look very good. I'd like to have some citizen input on that before the final design is put forward.
Okay. To answer your first question, it's been a back-and-forth dialogue with the district about what the railing standards needed to be. Once we conceded to the idea that the trail needed a rail, then it was about those standards versus the cost to build the rail. We're working actively with the district on how can we do so most cost-effectively. We've arrived at these two railing options, one being the more traditional, the other being an alternative. We're doing some actual mock-ups out there to test them, to look at the anchorage means, to try to arrive at which one's cheaper. At some point in that process, we could easily accommodate public input of, you know, was there a preference of one over the other? My only concern being that, you know, the citizenry might not fully understand. The matter of the rail height is one that's not negotiable with the district, so we will have to honor that. It's now about what's the rail aesthetic. So be happy to accommodate a public input, you know, working with you and your constituents.
Yeah, I'd just like to get as much, you know, as much input as possible, whether that's, you know, five residents or 100 residents. I want them to at least have some buy-off on this, you know, understanding that we have a minimum height requirement by flood control that we have to maintain.
Okay. We can make that commitment.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? You have a bunch of... Go ahead.
Is, are the rails tied to the equestrian use? If we did not have this as an equestrian trail, and the trailhead wasn't geared towards equestrian, would we have to have the rails still?
Yes, we would. The rails secondarily serve the equestrian community, primarily serve those in a taller position on a bicycle, traveling at a rapid pace. Those are the folks that a traditional 42-inch-high-guard rail will not keep them from going over the rail should they collide and into the river bottom. So following some national standards and guidelines, the rail height is higher. It serves a secondary benefit, obviously, given the taller stature of an equestrian, to kind of keep the horse between the lines as well.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
It is related to bicycles, primarily.
Bicycles. Thank you.
Mr. Ames?
Yeah, and I know we've been talking about this for quite a while, and we had the delay, and the decision was made, this is kind of a key spot to have a trailhead in our system, otherwise, we're missing a large swath of residences. And there is a horse community nearby, too, as well, so I look forward to this happening. This is in the edge of my district, so.
Great, thank you.
Seeing no other requests to speak. This is 8C, Contract Amendment, Valley Rain Construction, Skunk Creek Trailhead, 83rd Avenue, and Skunk Creek Bridge. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Ames, second by Mr. Edwards. Please vote. Clerk will record your vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Patana.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ames.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlat.
Yes.
Councilmember Leoni.
Yes.
And Mayor Barrett.
Yes. Next item is 10C, Contract Amendment, City Manager. Mr. Leoni.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I don't feel that this should be in a consent agenda, so I check it off so we just can vote on it, just the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. This is 10C, Contract Amendment, City Manager. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Carlat, second by Mr. Patana, sorry. No question, no request to speak. Would you please call?
Councilmember Rivera.
No.
Councilmember Patana.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ames.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlat.
Yes.
Councilmember Leoni.
No.
Mayor Barrett.
Yes. That concludes the consent agenda. We move to the regular agenda. The first item up is unfinished business, 18R, Public Hearing, Rezoning, Happy Valley 40, 83rd Avenue and Happy Valley Road.
Chris Hockes, our Planning Community Development Director, will make the presentation on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 18R is a proposed rezon filed on behalf of Happy Valley Land Partners. Your request before you tonight is to rezon 45.7 acres from R135, or single-family 35,000, meaning the minimum lot size, to a single-family residential PAD, Planary Development. For the viewing public, a Planary Development is an alternative type of zoning district that we frequently use in the city of Peoria, but it's a type of district where we can tailor standards either to apply to topographic or site concerns, or a unique development format, or to promote neighborhood compatibility in the area. The applicant is proposing this PAD in conformance with the general plan. There is no request tonight to change the general plan. The PAD, if approved, would facilitate a 62-lot gated residential development with a corresponding gross density of 1.36 dwelling units per acre. The site before you is shown in red, in the red polygram. It's 45.7 acres in size. The unusual parallelogram shape is a result of its history as a former mining claim. In fact, it was associated with a larger Sunrise Relief Gold Mine. The site was annexed into the city in 1989. In 2002, the site was rezoned from its agricultural zoning district to R135. While there was a development case at the time, it never materialized into a development. Topographically, the site slopes from the north to the south with a total relief of about 80 feet change in grade. On the site, there is an Army Corps of Engineer, or a 404 wash, that proceeds through the middle of the property, runs the middle. Other off-site flows that come from the north are concentrated in existing draining outfalls under Happy Valley Road, which will then be detained and managed onsite according to our drainage guidelines. The site is surrounded on three sides by state land, 102 acres of state land that's identified as ASLD on your map above you, and then within the state land parcel, there is a 230-foot SRP overhead power line easement with a 60-foot El Paso gas easement within that. This separates the state land parcel from neighborhoods to the south. In terms of some of the surrounding development, there are, the county island areas are identified in the darker brown. Vista Montaña is south of the corridor, and it's substantially, it's one-acre lots, but there are some lots that are even bigger than that. There's La Caia and Summit at Sunrise Mountain, those are also substantially one-acre and larger. Moving east, across 83rd Avenue, Cailejos Estates and Eagle Canyon, those have a minimum lot size of 18,000 square feet. Stepping back, this graphic illustrates the larger area-wide context. Of course, as you know, we're part of the Phoenix metropolitan area, and we've seen quite a bit of growth. We're consistently, decade to decade, within some of the top growth spots in the country. There's also been a significant change in residential and commercial growth in this area since the 2002 rezon that I mentioned. This includes the Happy Valley-Lake Pleasant Parkway commercial corridor that we have that's a little over a mile away from the site. This is a corridor that has developed and has potentially up to 1.7 million square feet in commercial space. Additionally, as you know, there's also been significant upgrades in infrastructure and roads, and roadways which have heightened mobility in the area. Of course, there's the completion of the Lake Pleasant Parkway and the widening activity that's going on today. There's also the recent opening of the Loop 303, which, as we all have talked in recent years, Loop 303 is considered a major economic spine of the city, and also, it provides accessibility to the area. Most significantly probably is the completion and widening of Happy Valley Road. This occurred in 2008, and this brought connectivity along this corridor via a six-lane, regionally significant roadway. The, this alignment in the roadway were not known at 2002, but this is a roadway that today provides connectivity from the, will have the emerging Loop 303 economic corridor to points east, notably in Phoenix, along the I-17 employment corridor, where you've got quite a bit of employment space and commercial space. Today, while there's about 19,000 average daily trips along Happy Valley, we certainly project that to rise considerably as development occurs in this and surrounding areas. The point of this is that the site, we believe, has changed from a landlocked parcel to one that has greater visibility today and has access along a highly-traveled corridor. The, this graphic illustrates the existing general plan land use map on your left, and then the existing zoning on your right. In a few minutes, I'll talk about how the request, and more specifically, how it aligns with the general plan. Just briefly, there are often misconceptions that we have about the general plan, and sometimes, there's a lot of confusion about the general plan versus zoning. The general plan land use map is really a broad brush. We use the same standard colors that we do with land use, you know, yellow is residential, red is commercial, and so forth, but the general plan is a broad brush map. It's a dynamic map. It illustrates roadways and a distribution of land uses and densities in the area. Zoning boundaries, on the other hand, are precise. They follow legal descriptions, they are attached to parcels, they tell us specifically what can be developed on a parcel and what the corresponding standards are with that site. So we evaluate each proposal that comes in, each rezoning, with its conformance to the general plan. When looking at the general plan map, the property that you see in red, it is designated as a state residential, that's zero-two dwelling units per acre with a target density of one unit per acre. The area in green to the south, that's the park open space, but that, what that is trying to represent is the overhead power line corridor. And then, as you can see, point south, including the county island, are all also a state residential, zero-two units per acre. Looking north, across Happy Valley Road, another large green area, that is a development that was entitled back in the 90s, Summit at Sunrise Canyon, and in that development, we would anticipate to receive a large dedication for a potential future preserve area there. And then to the, I guess, northeast corner of that is the Alora Vita site, and that is two to five units per acre. Looking at the zoning map, the existing zoning for the site today is, as I mentioned, R135, minimum lot size of 35,000 square feet. The state land piece that surrounds and envelopes the site is zoned general agricultural. As we've talked in the past, the general agricultural district is seen as a holding district, understanding that as development occurs, it might be changed someday to respond to that. When looking at surrounding zoning districts, the area south of the power line corridor is zoned R135. There's also SR43, 43 means one-acre lots minimum. Going east of 83rd Avenue, there are some communities, some of the communities I pointed out earlier, that are zoned R118, 18,000 square foot lots, or about a half acre is what they are. And then, as I said, northeast, the Alora Vita is a planned community district zoning This development is proposed as a gated community of up to 62 detached, single-family lots. The way it's organized in this Planary Development is that no less than one-half of the lots would be 18,000 square feet in size, and those 18,000 square foot lots are identified in the lighter yellow, if you can see on the screen, the lighter yellow. The balance of the lots would have a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet, and that's shown in the darker yellow. The maximum lot count results in a gross density of 1.36 units per acre. That is within the density range within the general plan, but it's above the target density. So in a few minutes, I'll talk to you about target density and how we apply that. The development today would be accessed solely from Happy Valley. Traffic engineer has reviewed the traffic impact analysis, they've looked at the site distances, and has accepted full access at Happy Valley Road. The access point that's identified on the screen, that would generally align with the entitled community that I mentioned to the north, the Sunrise Canyon, if that ever comes forward, that would align there. And also, that access point meets our access management guidelines, meaning that it is roughly about halfway between 83rd and 91st, which are mile arterial roadways. Given that it is the only access point in the development, all lots would be required to be fire-sprinkled. Moving on with the open space, approximately a quarter, or 27% of the site is open space, about 10.8 acres. That open space includes internal HOA parks, and includes the 404 wash that I mentioned that runs through the middle of the property. It also includes natural open space along Happy Valley roadway, and I think this is significant because it advances that vision of Happy Valley Parkway retaining its open character, its open feel to it. So in this vein, the open space will be accessible not only to the internal, to the community internally, but also, you know, visually to the public traveling along Happy Valley Parkway. And that could be, as opposed to its current zoning, which, under the Desert Lands Conservation overlay, allows on-lot open space. So that, those lot, those open space would be retained behind walls, if you will. So that's the difference between those two. This graphic briefly illustrates some of the thematic and representative elements proposed for this development. On the left, you can see some potential street lighting examples that would be different than our standard street light. This also includes decorative walls, landscaping, monumentation, pavement treatments, and landscaping to announce arrival into the development. You can see that in the middle, the middle photo right there, the middle representation. And then the inbound entry, as you saw on the development plan, that would tee at a centralized HOA park, which I think provides a little bit of, announces arrival into the As you know, the... Try that again. There we go. Let's go back. There we go. The rezoning process... There we go. Let's go back. There we go. The rezon process requires a citizen participation plan. As you know, when a case comes in, we provide a notice of application. Based on the size of this parcel, we provided that notice to all ownerships within a quarter-mile, 13, 20 feet, plus all registered HOAs within a mile. That radius is also repeated when the applicant has their neighborhood meeting and also prior to a hearing that we have, planning, zoning commission, and council. Neighborhood meeting was held on May 16, 2013. It was held at Sunrise Mountain Library. There were 25 attendees. Some of the citizen concerns expressed at that meeting is that many preferred larger lots, one acre or at least 35,000 square feet and above. Some folks thought that the proposal was out of character and that it should develop within the existing zoning that it has today. There were also comments about, or questions rather, about this site being the Sunrise Water Company, the adequacy of the water supply, and there were also some concerns about traffic safety, namely on Happy Valley Road. As far as citizen input, to date, we've received two letters from an opposing party. We've received one letter from the Peoria Unified School District in support. We've received emails from 21 property owners in opposition and foreign support. And then we did get a petition with 54 signatures on it. Some of those signatures overlap with some of the emails that we received in opposition. And then we got one email from the Lakai HOA. So Lakai is one of the communities south of this proposed development. So next couple of slides, I want to talk about a few items with conformance with the general plan. We look at the rezon, it has to conform with the general plan. While we often tend to focus on the land use plan, the land use element, let's just recognize it's one of 14 elements within our general plan, and all of those elements in totality provide policy guidance in terms of how we grow and develop. As I mentioned, the land use plan, it's a broad stroke, boundaries are imprecise, typically along edges. And so when I say edges, what do I mean by that? I mean where there's a change in land use, where you have a significant roadway, maybe it's a major open space feature, those could be types of edges. And typically along the edges, those are points of refinement that we might look at for appropriate transitions in land use to occur. The, as I mentioned, the general plan designation for the site is a state residential, zero to two units per acre. Again, the applicant is not seeking a change in this general plan designation. Other things I'd like to talk about, misconceptions about it. The zero to two units per acre does not imply a minimum lot size of one unit per acre. In fact, there's several options to implement that designation. One option is, what's proposed tonight, is a planned area development, but it does not mean a minimum lot size of one unit per acre, nor is there a lot size floor within the general plan. Now, one of the letters that you received in your packet from the representative from the opposition points to a table on the general plan, and it suggested that that table is a regulatory table where it would require a minimum lot size four designation. I can tell you that that's not the intent. It's never been used that way. That table really was intended to be a simple density yield table, and certainly, we've never, we've never applied it that way in other projects throughout the city, including projects I've worked on with that attorney, such as the Alora Vita project, where it does not have the minimum lot size that would be suggested in that letter. Target density. Part of the general plan conformity analysis revolves around the concept of target density. So what is target density? Within the range, zero to two units per acre, again, the target density is one unit per acre. The target density is the maximum allowable density for a project meeting the minimum standards. So as I mentioned, in this case, it's one unit per acre. The target density is an incentive tool that we use to incentivize enhanced quality in design, amenities, additional open space, could be substantial dedications, it could be a number of things. There's a menu of options that are in our general plan that we can look at in this vein. Now, it's not a formula. In other words, I can't say, you know, the applicant provided one more acre of open space than was required, therefore, that equates to, you know, two units above the target. It's not a formula-based. It's basically, we exercise professional judgment. We look at the commensurate public benefit, given the standards and amenities that are provided above the minimum standards. Happy Valley 40 is suggesting a 1.36 unit per acre density. That's 0.36 above the target density. Some of the things that they've identified in their PAD document, enhanced standard, enhanced architectural and design standards. As you know, we have a design review manual, the manual, we've got a lot of good standards in there, and some standards are requirements, others are considerations. So on some of these, they've identified standards that are suggestions that they've agreed to make requirements, and they include things like four-sided architecture. They include things like change in, material change in volume in plane of a building, diverse streetscape, and so forth. They've also, you know, reserving a significant amount of open space. I mentioned about 27% of the site would be open space. Now, open space, again, is within the natural open space. It's also within usable open space. It provides visual benefit versus the natural open space that could be contained behind walls within, such as an R-135 development we have. The natural open space also, it's a 15% requirement if you have a feature. So the intent of the DLCO, the Desert Lands Conservation Overlay, is to preserve significant desert features, and desert features include things like washes or hillsides or significant stands of vegetation. In this case, we have a project that really its only significant feature is a 404 wash. And I can tell you that 404 wash and its buffer around it doesn't equate to 15%, but nonetheless, the zoning does require at least 15% preservation. So what that does in this development is land that would otherwise be developable would have to be preserved, and in fact, it is, as you saw on the development plan, particularly along Happy Valley roadway. But I think it's a good trade-off because it provides, again, as I mentioned, a nice, that nice open feel that we seek along Happy Valley Parkway. Other things, there are also, you get credit for variation in lot size and product type. We look at that as promoting an interesting streetscape. Also, significant land dedication required from that absorbed by Happy Valley Road. There's a triangular piece of property that's on the northwest corner that is, actually, it's not right away today, and it's interesting how that turned out, but nonetheless, it would be required to be dedicated to the city, so it's part of the city right away. When evaluating general plan conformity, we also look to achieve appropriate land use transition. So let me stop for a second. Now, what is land use transition? Why is it important? This is a common land use principle that we use to, it's designed to separate incompatible land uses or buffer incompatible land uses. We look at land uses within a gradient, so things from the most intense being your industrial districts to your least intense being agricultural districts. To give you an example, you know, let's take an industrial zoning districts. We would not want to see that next to a single-family district for a number of reasons. So industrial district might make sense next to a business park district, which then might be located next to an office district, which then might be located next to a single-family district. The point is that there's transition and land use transition that occurs. In a similar vein, we look at Happy Valley Parkway as a point of transition in that it's a six-lane, as I said, regionally significant roadway. It has quite a bit of impact on the surrounding area. We see, we see this development with half-acre lots and 12,000 square foot lots providing transition, which then transitions to, again, a state land, 102 acre state land parcel that surrounds Happy Valley 40. Then it transitions down to a overhead power line corridor of 230 feet, which then transitions down to, an R-135 area, which then transitions down to one acre lots that we see in the county island. So we think this also follows that common principle of land use transition. So in summary, some of the key findings that we've had in our report, again, the gross density, 1.36 units per acre, we believe falls within the residential estate land use category. There are factors that we've evaluated that we believe are commensurate with a 0.36 rise above the target density. 27% of the site, rather, is open space, and it maintains that open character, and it also provides a mix of housing options within a high-quality gated community. And as I mentioned in the previous slide, we believe the proposal provides appropriate land use transition. Mentioned Happy Valley roadway. I mentioned state land and other features around the area. So it provides that important land use transition. So in closing, the recommendation tonight from the staff is to concur with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Recommendation to rezon 45.7 acres from single-family residential R-135 to the Happy Valley 40 PAD, subject to conditions 1 through 29. If that'll take any questions.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to open a public hearing. This is a public hearing. I'm going to have to try to resolve how this, some of this is going to work. We've got a lot of speaker requests forms. I'm going to ask the attorney representing the applicant first, and then Mr. Gilbert, representing many of you who signed your time to him, will speak second. And then we've got some other that didn't give up their time, and they're both in a mixture of yes and no. So when we go through that, we'll come back and we can ask questions.
...company. I think staff gave a very thorough presentation of this case. I want to commend Chris and his staff. We worked very, very hard with them over almost a year-long period. I'm going to talk about that momentarily, but I want to begin by saying that I think Chris's presentation demonstrates the analysis that has gone into this case, the attention to detail, and I think of all the cases that I've been involved in, particularly because this is a, it's a significant parcel, but it's 45 acres in size. I think that the attention to detail that the staff has committed to this site is really commendable. I want to try to cut through to what I think are the three major points of the case. Again, Chris did a very thorough job, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions. But as I break down this case, I think there are three points that Chris touched upon, which I think are relevant here. One is the isolation of the property in terms of it being relatively removed from the contiguous properties. Second is, I just want to amplify a little bit about the open space, and third, talk about the density. If you look at the parcel, again, this is Chris's, this is Chris's and staff's presentation of the, trying to show the context of this parcel vis-à-vis some of the parcels to the south. I think that in terms of his own cases, one of the really extraordinarily unique things about this parcel is its isolation. If you go to the next one, Taylor, this sort of gives you a brief, just a distance analysis of how far we are from contiguous development. At the southeast corner, that actually is about 300 feet to the nearest home, and then obviously, as you progress to the west, because of the diagonal nature of the site, that distance increases to the point where when you get over to the west side, we're 1,700 feet away. So we're at our closest, we're a football field from the nearest residential to the south, and at our farthest, we're over five football fields. I don't have to tell this council, the most contentious zoning cases that we oftentimes face are when you have a property that's being rezoned that is right contiguous to an adjacent property. Obviously, that's where the passion seemed to flow the most. Again, from our, from our perspective, having this parcel so isolated provides, we think, the residents with the protection and the appropriate buffering that they should rightly be concerned about when development occurs contiguous on the state land piece. So again, as Chris has indicated, 300 to 700 feet of separation. The area that surrounds us, where the arrows are into the east and west, is a state land piece. That state land piece is going to be going to auction. My clients may well bid on it. I mean, when that piece comes through the process, that's where the rubber's going to meet the road because we're going to be, that parcel is going to be directly contiguous to large lots. That's where I think the appropriate discussion takes place about buffering and single-story size of lots, et cetera, and that undoubtedly is going to occur in this case because of all the contiguous acre lot development. I think importantly, again, although it's obvious when you look at this aerial, there's no vehicular connectivity. That's oftentimes a problem, particularly when you have some of the city parcels that are feeding into adjacent county parcels, that where you have road connectivity, that's a real problem for existing developments. That doesn't occur here because the only point of access is obviously to Happy Valley Road. So in staff's, in staff's report, when they say that this is an isolated piece, they're certainly, they're certainly accurate in saying that. Next one, Taylor. Just looking at the site plan, again, 27% of this site is going to remain in open space, and much of that area is developable. And the open space is both the brown and the green. When you enter into the subdivision from Happy Valley Road, you can see there's some monumentation as you come in, but then you're daylighting directly into some open space. That open space is a little shy of three acres of open space, pretty significant open space feature. And then if you look down in the southeast corner of the site, we deliberately tried to place open space down in the southeast corner because, again, even though we're a full football field 300 feet away, we tried to locate the open space there because to the extent that we were going to have any impact, which we don't think we're going to, on the existing development, having the open space at that closest point was appropriate. And then lastly, the area in brown along Happy Valley Road, that area, the east-west dimension, is about 1,100 feet. The entire, the entire dimension of our east-west dimension of the site is roughly about 2,800 square, 2,800 feet. And one of the, I think, real design principles, which we tried to incorporate, which I think we were successful here, is trying to retain the open space and trying to create, and trying to maintain the desert features as you're driving along Happy Valley Road. When we were at the planning commission meeting, there were speaker after speaker that said, that really lamented the fact that they were losing the desert environment. Well, one of the things which I think this plan brings to the table, and some of the residents don't agree with this, some of the residents have focused exclusively on lot size to the exclusion of preservation of open space, and that's entirely their right. But I think that if you live in the area, preserving significant open space and significant desert features along the major arterial Happy Valley, I think that's a real benefit to not only the residents of the subdivision, but to residents of the area. And what I'm going to show you here, these three pictures are the Knoll area, which are being preserved and which are represented in that, in that brown, brown portion of the site plan. So Taylor, you can just flip through these three. And again, this area, this is where, this is at our eastern end of the property. This is where the sound wall begins, and I would just submit to you that the, that the relationship of how the Happy Valley has typically been treated with the sound wall versus what we're providing to the east of this or to the west of this is a significant benefit and a significant upgrade in terms of the streetscape and the frontage. And that area, by the way, constitutes about, about five acres. Third point is the density. You know, typically, when developers, it's been my experience that when developers are providing anywhere from 20 to 30% of open space, which is what we are providing here, the developer's going to usually seek to go to the higher range of the density range. So again, the general plan here is zero to two with a target of one. I would submit that it would not be unusual for most developers to be up here and saying, "Look, if, since I'm providing 27% open space, I want to have somewhere in the 1.7 or 1.8 higher, higher density range closer to the two." We're at 1.36. We're 0.36 over the, over the general plan density of one unit per acre. And to me, and again, people differ, but the focus that so many of the speakers at the planning commission have on the lot sizes, to me, is misplaced. At least it's misplaced in terms of the impact that it's going to have on the area. To me, it's the density that is the relevant barometer, because the density and the number of units that you have on a piece of, piece of property, that's going to dictate the traffic, how much traffic is going to be generated. That's going to dictate the impact on the streets. It's going to dictate the impact on the water supply. It's going to dictate the impact on the environment. And when you look at the next one, at this next, I think, interesting graphic, you can see our site density of 1.36. As was pointed out, in the planning commission meeting, there are two subdivisions just to the south of us. Ironically, some of the, some of the speakers who were at the planning and zoning commission came and spoke out against our property, and yet you look at the density of those two subdivisions, there are 118 subdivisions, they actually have a higher density unit per acre impact than we do. So again, I think for the reasons that I just explained, the 27% open space, the relatively low end of the 1.3 unit per acre, the fact that because of staff's insistence, the majority of the lots are going to be over 18,000 square feet, and lastly, because we have dedicated or are dedicating in connection with this case, an additional acre for Happy Valley Road. Don't ask me how this happened, but Happy Valley was constructed a portion on property that has not yet been dedicated. There's about an acre that's up in the northwest corner that we're dedicating. For all those reasons, staff has decided to support this case and the Planning and Zoning Commission, which spent an extraordinary amount of time. I think we were in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission for about two hours, and after they vetted the whole case, and after there was a very lengthy list of speakers who spoke, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously supported the case. One last point, and then I'll sit down. I just, I think it's important for the council to understand how much time and the effort that we went through with staff as this case was in the zoning queue. We were in the zoning queue for 11, maybe almost 12 months. You know, typically, most zoning cases will be six to seven months. One of the reasons why we were in for such a lengthy period of time is because the initial submittals that we made to staff, staff rejected. We started out with a, with a proposal that I think it was 82 or 83 lots. That had us up to a density of about 1.8. We felt that because of the improvements that we're making, because of the open space that we're providing, because of the extra acre that we were dedicating for Happy Valley Road, that we can make an argument that the 1.8, 82 lots was, was appropriate. Staff said no. They said, "Look, you have got to bring the density down." All of this was in recognition of, and out of respect for the, for the larger lots subdivisions that exist to the south. And they said, "You've got to bring down the number of lots. You've got to increase the number of half-acre lots, and you need to increase the open space." So we went through a series of volleys. We went, I don't want to make this sound like it's Monty Hall, let's make a deal, but we went down to 78 lots with 16% open space. We then went down to 72 lots with 17% open space, and then finally, we landed on 62 lots with 1.3 open space of 27%. And only, only then did they indicate that they would be supportive of the case and that the case... the case was going to be consistent with the general. And again, I don't mean to imply that they were being arbitrary, because there are standards that Chris referenced in the general plan that he thought and that staff felt that we had to meet. And so I think it was a very good vetting process. I think that as a result of staff's diligence, we wound up with a better plan with more open space. And so anyone that criticizes staff for not being diligent and not working hard and not trying to protect adjacent property owners' interests, I think that that's unfortunate, and it's not accurate. Chris talks about Happy Valley Road. This area has changed since 1992, 1,007 square feet down the street at the intersection. That wasn't there when this property was originally planned. The traffic volume, as Chris points out, is 20,000 trips per day. It's connecting to 303 to I-17. Those numbers are only going to increase. In fact, we had a traffic projection that that 20,000 figure would be up to 35,000 trips in the next decade. And so I would argue that the combination of those facts does warrant some change of the lot sizes. The last point, and then I promise I'm going to, matter of fact, I'm going to hold that off the rebuttal. I just would like to end by saying that we've worked hard. This is a, it's a different type of lot size that may exist to the south of us, but the relevance is that even though the lots are somewhat smaller, the density is the same. The density is 1.3, the same as exists to the southeast, and we think we spent a lot of time with the staff and come up with a good product, and we'd ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gilbert.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Paul Gilbert, 701 North 44th Street, Phoenix, Arizona. I stand here in the capacity tonight to represent basically the Lakai Community Association, which is indicated in green immediately to the south of this proposal. We also represent many of the other neighbors in the immediate area. We are very concerned about this case. I'd like to start with one of the main points that Mr. Curly made, and he said, "This piece is a piece in isolation." And it is admittedly separated by many feet from that sea of R-135 housing that is immediately to the south. That's not our primary concern. Our primary concern is exactly the opposite. It isn't in isolation. What happens if you zone this piece for 12,000 square foot lots, which is the proposal tonight, not all of them, but the majority of the lots, I think, are in the vicinity of 12,000, many are 18,000? But you are setting a very, very dangerous, and from our perspective, powerful precedent for when that state land piece comes in. That state land piece then will, people like me will come to the podium and say, "Hey, you zoned that 12,000 square foot lots. Now you can't expect us to have R-135, 1,000 square foot lots adjacent to the parcel you just recently zoned for 12,000 square foot lots." And that'll be the argument. So to say this piece is in isolation is a misnomer and misstates the very large and motivating concern as to why the majority of these people, these 60 people that have signed the petition in opposition, are concerned about this case. This is not a case in isolation. You are setting a precedent for that state land piece, make no mistake about it, and we're very concerned about that. It is not a piece in isolation. We oppose this request to allow the higher-density residential development and suggest that the property should be developed under its current zoning, which is 35,000 square foot lots. Now, we take vigorous umbrage with the characterization that this case is consistent with the general plan. And I want to develop that in a lot of detail this evening. The general plan says this is residential estate. Residential estate. Table 2.1 of the general plan indicates zoning districts that are correlative to the general plan designation pursuant to that table. And you've had attempts to minimize that this evening. I'm going to remember that when I come in with some of my cases in the future, incidentally. But pursuant to this table, R-118 is the smallest zoning district allowed in the residential estate designation. R-118 is the smallest that can be designated. This case has R-118 as the largest lot. It is a complete, complete misjustification. Well, that's very kind of you. Thank you. I think Curly lowered that just so I'd have a problem with this presentation. So back to my point, your table then for 2.1 says, "For the residential estate designation, R-118 is the smallest, and in this case, it's the largest." How can one, in good conscience, classify this case under those circumstances as being consistent with the general plan? The proposed Happy Valley 40 PAD has 62 lots that range in sides from 12,000 to 18,000 square feet. Consider this: if the R-112 zoning district and its 12,000 square foot lots would not be allowed in the residential estate land use designation, then surely a PAD that allows for 12,000 square foot lots should also not be allowed within the residential estate designation. You can rationalize this all you want, but it is idle sophistry to suggest that this case, under these circumstances, is consistent with the general plan. It simply is not. When it says right in there that 18,000 is the smallest lot, and yet their plan proposes 18,000 as the largest lot. 48% of the lots proposed are under 18,000 square feet. That's not in conformance with your general plan. To my knowledge, there are no lots, and no example has been given to you this evening, none, where there are lots smaller than 18,000 square feet in size within the surrounding lands designated as residential estate. So you have no residential estate lots that are zoned for 12,000 square feet. They don't exist, and none has been pointed out to you. It is not consistent with the general plan. Let's now just deal with the target density. We've had an attempt tonight to say, "Oh, target density, that doesn't mean very much." Well, it sure meant a lot when I was here on the Alora Vita project. I had that emphasized and emphasized during the whole zoning case on Alora Vita, and I'm going to come back to that. I asked you to park that for a moment. Come back to that in just a moment. Let's talk target density. Does it mean something, or does it not? Is this just a nullity in your general plan? I submit that it is not, and that you have held developers to target density rather tenaciously in the past. The residential estate designation allows a density range of zero to two dwelling units per acre with a target density of one. The general plan says you can exceed the target density. And then it gives you some guidance. And it says, "If you meet certain criteria, then you can exceed the target density." Let's look at those criteria, and I ask you to reason with me and ask yourselves, is this criteria satisfied in this case? The general plan, and I quote now, says, "The target density may only be exceeded when you meet the following." Quote, "For those projects that exhibit superior quality and design and/or which provide amenities, dedications, or improvements above and beyond minimum city standards." So your rule of thumb is, if you're going to have a target density, and you're going to allow it to be exceeded, you've got to meet the specific criteria that's set forth in your general plan. Let's reason together now and see if that criteria has been satisfied in this case. The general plan states, "The granting of development approval for projects exceeding the target density should be commensurate to the overall public benefit," and then the criteria follows. Happy Valley 40 is requesting a gross density of 1.36. That's an excess of the target density by 36%. That's a whopping increase in the target density. We suggest that the implied enhancement listed in the PAD narrative are not enhancements at all, and more importantly, do not justify an increase above the target density. Now, let's break that criteria down in serietum and go through and look at it. First of all, enhanced design and architectural standards. Have you heard any dialogue tonight about enhanced design or architectural standards? We haven't, and we've looked through the PAD booklet, and there's nothing in there that is different than those already required in the city's design review manual. Furthermore, and significantly, there are no exhibits in the PAD, such as building elevations, which demonstrate how these enhancements will provide the, quote, "superior quality and design required by the general plan to exceed the target density of one dwelling unit per acre." It's not there. Next is a category called water conservation and preservation. They claim in their PAD booklet that there will be water conservation and preservation, but nowhere in that PAD booklet, nowhere, do they qualify or quantify the water conservation measures that will be implemented. The general plan says, "If you're going to increase the base target density, there needs to be significant, one, and two, measurable water conservation measures." Both are lacking here. You have no ability to measure the water conservation measures, because they don't tell you. They just say, "We're going to do it." There's no measurable difference. That's a criteria that you have in your general plan that says, "If you're going to exceed the base density, you've got to show that." They don't. And this is one of the specific elements they recall you with by saying it justifies this increased density. Now, let's go to the next. Variation in lot sizing is another specific criteria that allows the divergence from the general plan target density. Let's look at this. 30 lots are between 12,000 square feet to 18,000 square feet, and 32 are slightly larger than 18,000 square feet. There is only a relatively small variation in lot sizes. That's not the required, and this isn't my wording, it's from your general plan, substantial variation in order to justify a density increase above the target density of one. Now, you've been told this evening that there's 20% of the project for open space. That is admittedly one of the criteria that can be used to justify receiving the target density in excess of the minimum standards. Let's go through and see the actual facts. 5.9 acres of natural open space, NOS, are provided. That's the minimum required. They have 2.8 acres of usable open space. That's also the minimum that is required. All that is left is 2.1 acres of HOA-maintained open space, or 4% of the overall gross area, and that consists of retention basins, drainage channels, and the entering feature. An increase in target density based on this, quote, "excess open space" should be minimal, as there is only a minimal increase in the overall public benefit, and that's the test required under the general plan. We're not receiving this evening, in this plan, a substantial increase in excess over the standard basic minimum that is required for open space. Now, I was amused by this attempt to bootstrap another justification for increasing the target density by dedication of, quote, "substantial right-of-way." Well, the staff report correctly points out that due to the design of Happy Valley Road, the development will have to dedicate some additional, and in fact, admittedly needed, right-of-way for Happy Valley Road. But is it significantly more than what is typically required for a right-of-way dedication? That's the standard in your ordinance. And in fact, Happy Valley Road is fully developed at this time and located north of the subject property. The only dedication they're required to make, and it's shown on this map, that little triangular area, is approximately 35,000 square feet on the extreme northwest corner of the property, where the roadway curves south. Well, had Happy Valley been a, quote, "typical project," which is what your ordinance says, and that's how you measure whether there's going to be excessive right-of-way or not, you measured against what would typically be required. Well, a typical project with arterial frontage along a 3,000-foot north boundary would be required to dedicate a 65-foot half-street, which actually amounts to 195,000 square feet. This typical dedication would be five and a half times what the dedication actually provided. One cannot bootstrap, then, the justification for exceeding the density, the target density of one, and jumping to a whopping 1.36 by saying that we're providing this 35,000-square-foot dedication, because the measurement is juxtaposed against what would be a typical dedication requirement. That is just not present here. Now, let's talk a little bit about Alora Vita. I didn't intend to bring this up. Some of you may remember, I was the attorney for Alora Vita, which is up in the northeast quadrant of the area we're talking about here. But that is actually a wonderful case in point and vindicates what we're saying this evening, and that is, increasing the density of a project above the general plan target density is allowable if you justify the increase. Let's use Alora Vita as an example, because the staff mentioned it in their presentation to you. Now, that's a large project. It's located basically northeast of the subject property, and admittedly, it consists of almost 1,200 acres. When you approved this zoning in 2011, you approved an increase in the target density. How much? Anyone remember? Target density was three. We came in and got 3.12. That's the minimal extent of the target density. And what did you require of that developer to do? You required that in order to get this minimal increase, we had to dedicate a park site, a school site, 323 acres of natural open area, nearly twice the open space that we were required to preserve. In contrast, Happy Valley 40 is requesting a 36% increase and is providing very little more than the minimum standards. Now, Mayor, you've been generous with my time, although I'm taking five other speakers' time, so it will save you time in the long run. If you'll be patient with me, let me make a couple of quick points in conclusion. The Happy Valley 40 property is surrounded on three sides, as I mentioned at the outset of my presentation, by the 112-acre State Land Department parcel. That, to us, is critical as we reason together... That to us is critical as we reason together and focus on this case. This parcel is proposed to be placed up for auction in the immediate future. It currently has a zoning category of ag and a designation of residential estate. This has a designation of residential estate. Think of the precedent you are now providing for this state land parcel by taking a parcel designated on your general plan as residential estate and setting a precedent now for another piece coming in, virtually on the hills of this piece, also designated residential estate. And they're going to be claiming whoever that developer is, and it could well be this developer, one doesn't know, that therefore residential estate can include 12,000-square-foot lots. That is just an anathema to the myriad of people that I am representing here this evening. We were told in earlier presentation that this piece was a quote, "buffer." We failed to see how zoning this piece, 12,000 square feet, for 12,000 square feet lots, allows a buffer of any type to us when it has the same designation on your general plan that the 112 acres does of the state land department. You will be having a difficult time justifying not giving some type of similar zoning. It's not much of a buffer. Now, I'm usually on the other side of these positions. I don't enjoy opposing cases, particularly against such a nice guy as Mike Curley. I really do have affection for him, and it may not be apparent in my presentation this evening. But we, in the spirit of compromise and working together, have offered the developer a proposal. We're not happy with this proposal, but we will live with it, and we will agree to be bound by this decision if the city council works and agrees to this compromise. The compromise we're proposing is a development that proposes 35,000-square-foot lots along the property's southern border. They can have smaller lots on the interior. These smaller lots then will be closer to Happy Valley Road. That seems to be frankly the paramount justification you've heard this evening for these smaller lots. So we'll say, "Okay, you can have those smaller lots near Happy Valley Road, but give us the buffer against the state land department parcel of R-135." It still doesn't meet the general plan requirements, but this is a proposal we can live with, and we will agree to be bound by it. So we suggest that as a possible modification. Now, in conclusion, our position simply and summarized, hopefully trenchantly, is as follows. One, the request is not in conformance with your general plan. It's not in conformance with the surrounding area. Now, look at the surrounding area. The surrounding area, all this area to the south, is zoned R-135. Mr. Curley pointed out two exceptions, and they're indicated in the yellow. Those exceptions, however, are a minimum of 18,000-square-foot lots. There is no, repeat, no lot of 12,000 square feet in this immediate area, and it's not allowed in your general plan. And then, not only do we have the nonconformity with the surrounding area of the 12,000-square-foot lots, there is no reason to increase the density within the subject area. 35,000-square-foot lots are selling just fine. Look at Vista Montaña to the south and to the east. Those lots are on, many of them on Happy Valley Road, they're doing just fine as 35,000-square-foot lots. Lastly, the Peoria residents in this area bought their properties in reliance on your general plan and in reliance on the target density. That reliance created an expectation that they have a right to rely on, and coming in and proposing 12,000-square-foot lots derogates from that reliance and is inconsistent with your general plan. I'm going to let them speak for themselves this evening. They have very strong feelings about this. So, we ask the city council initially to deny this application as proposed for the reasons outlined. Secondly, if you do not want to deny, then we beg you to consider our proposed compromise, which is a huge compromise on our part, to put 35,000-square-foot lots along the periphery. So it gives us at least a buffer and an opportunity to take umbrage with what is coming, and that is the state land department coming in and asking for the same density as this case. Thank you for your patience. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. We will come back to that. Next will be individual comments. You will have three minutes. Unfortunately, the electronic clock is not working, so I will be timing you from here. I will let you know when you're getting close to being done. I'd ask you not to say the same thing over and over and over. If you have nothing new to add, say, "Yes, I support the developer. No, I don't support the developer," and we will score them accordingly. First one up. Let's put on my glasses.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Dr. Ramy also said that I could use his three minutes, if that's acceptable to you. Real quickly, are you going to put up a slide for us? Thank you. One of the reasons that we were told that the council and the zoning people were considering this change was that things change. Life's different than it used to be. We'd like to just point out how that works and where it is exactly. In 2001, the Peoria general plan was approved by a public vote, and you all know well how that works. There's private citizen input, there was state input, there were your input, there were your planning and zoning staff's input. All came together, put the plan together, and it was voted on and passed. Between 2001 and 2007, the West Wing development was developed, built out, sold out, completed. The 1,300 homes were there, completed all in the 2007, 2008 timeframe. In 2007, 2008, there was a million-plus acres that, I mean, square feet of commercial property that was put into place in the Lake Pleasant and 99th, Happy Valley and 99th Avenue. That all took place and was completed in the 2008 timeframe. In 2009, the Happy Valley Road was put in, six lanes ride. Those are all big changes. We recognize that. In 2010, the general plan came up again for your review. You looked at it, your staff looked at it, the state looked at it, the citizen input was made, you had a citizen committee that looked at it, and their recommendation was one dwelling unit per acre for Happy Valley 40 and the surrounding land. After all of the changes were made, that recommendation was placed back to you. You as a council voted in favor, the zoning staff as a council vote, I mean, the zoning commission voted for it. It was put to a public vote and approved. Everybody understood all of the changes and still felt one dwelling unit per acre was the target density for this specific piece of land. That's important to us because we, as Paul Gilbert indicated, did rely on that, and we appreciate the fact that you were sustaining the things that we had been told as we went to build our property and to build our homes, knowing, or at least counting on the fact that the property that was empty north of us would be under the same requirements and regulations as we were. The last thing that I'll mention real quickly is the transition, and I know that the staff puts a lot of effort into the transition issue. What they didn't mention to you that is important for you to know is that the property on the north side of Happy Valley, which is the Sunrise Mountain, has had a PAD done, and the residential property has a target density not of one dwelling unit per acre, but .92 dwelling units per acre that's been approved in that PAD for that property in Sunrise Mountain.
You're halfway through your time.
Thank you for your time.
No, you're halfway through your time.
Okay, thank you. Great. So, addition to that, on the east side, on the west side of the property, all of those property are less than one dwelling unit per acre. On the south, it's all less than one acre density. Our development is .6 dwelling units per acre, and the key for me is, and I like the developers, we've visited with them, they're good people, we're not here to throw stones at anybody, we hope they develop, they'll do a good job. We want them to develop in one R-135. That's what we would like to see. We're not trying to stop development, we're not antis. We're trying to see that the plan that was instituted, studied, reviewed, elected by the vote of the people is just simply followed. Let's go to one dwelling unit per acre, and that's certainly possible. Paul Gilbert mentioned the Vista Montaña. That's a recent development. They've just completed the Phase 1, which is in the center below that property. It's sold out with the exception of a few acres, all R-135, and they've gone to the next nearest land to this land and to the 112 acres that surround it is a Vista Montaña property on Happy Valley Road that bounds on Happy Valley Road exactly like Happy Valley 40 does. They dealt with all of the issues of water and transition and Happy Valley Road traffic and the changes that have come from millions square feet and 1,300 homes in West Wing and the density of the traffic that goes by, and they're selling rapidly at R-135. There's not a need, from an economic standpoint, for a developer to have higher density than R-135. It works. Shay is very happy with it, and Vista Montaña too. We believe that this developer would be very happy with R-135 there if they would consider doing it, and that it's our hope that they would go forward with that. I don't know how much time I have left, but I'm a car dealer, and I understand what Mr. Curley has done. Because I'm a car dealer, if you've ever been asked to go into a car dealership and you find the beautiful car you want that's $35,000, that's sitting on the lot, like a 35,000-square-foot lot, and the dealer comes to you and he says, "I can get you that for just 1.8 percent," or $62,000, and you'd go, "$62,000 for the 35,000-square-foot lot?" And then he reduces it to 52,000, then to 47,000, and then he comes all the way down to $42,000, or 137 percent of the suggested retail price, the target density. And he says to you, "Madam and Mr. Councilperson, I've got a deal. I can get you that 35,000 target density car for only $42,000." What would you say? "No, thank you." That's what I would say. That's what we would all say, because it's not realistic. He can sell $35,000 Toyotas, or Fords, or Chivvies, just like Shay does, quarter of a mile down the road, and if you knew that that dealer right next door was able to sell it for $35,000, you'd thank him for their time and you'd walk out. We hope that's what you'll do with this proposal tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Greg Stoltz. If I mispronounce people's name, I apologize in advance. You have three minutes?
No, you pronounced it good. I'm the president of Calalejos Estates. You can see it there on the map, and we were the ones that initiated the petition that's been circulating, and I think we provided copies to each of you all. That list continues to grow as word gets out about this. There has been talk throughout this process about our lot size or our zoning, R-118 or There isn't one house in our development that's under 20,000-square-foot lot, and there's several of them approaching 35,000 square feet. So the focus on our particular neighborhood is actually counterproductive because it's approaching a different zoning requirement, but certainly we built within our zoning that was allotted for us. There's been a lot of talk from legal perspectives, I'm not going to rehash it, but from my perspective, you guys have to filter through all of the issues that have been brought up. The builder is a builder, he's going to build homes. He's there to make money. Makes perfect sense that he would come in, shoot high with eighty-some lots, and then try to settle for somewhere in the middle. As a matter of fact, I believe that the reference that what the city had done was settled. They settled on a particular point. I think you guys need to stand up and do what you do best, and that's represent the people and oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm a multiple business owner here in the city of Peoria. I live just west of this property, north of Happy Valley, on an acre and a quarter parcel up there. Been up there for 13 years and seen a lot of change occur in this area, and, you know, we support the proposed development that's before you here tonight. You know, the terrain up there, the lot proposal, the diversity in the lot size, I think fits our area, and for that reason, you know, I support proposed development that's been put for you here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Might have been my writing, it should be Hammer, H-A-M-M-E. No problem. Anyway, I've been a resident about 13 years also. I reside on about an acre lot. I've been involved in this parcel land for about nine years, so this isn't something that I'm doing a quick flip and don't have a lot of time and energy involved. As I mentioned at the planning and zoning hearing, you know, with the density out there and the underdevelopment and the commercial areas, you know, we need rooftops and higher density to create some of the, you know, tax revenues and things of that nature. So that's, being a builder and a local resident and own a business in the area, we definitely support the density of the subdivision. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Jeff Skidmore. I'm a business owner, I'm a commercial real estate owner and a resident of a one-acre lot in Montana de Ora Ranch. Pretty simple, I'm in favor of the rezoning, and I'm backing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, council members. I'm a resident of Peoria, business owner, and I support the builders' plan to build the, to add more houses and different lot sizes to maybe occur to allow different types of homeowners to afford homes in that area. So I support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I just would like to say that we are here in support also of the project. I believe there's exceptions to every rule, all the lawyers and everything had their micro, looking at everything in our microscope. I think it would bring great value to the neighborhood. It's a unique piece of property that it would benefit, I believe, the neighborhood. I also live in an acre and a half lot just around the area, so I believe it would be beneficial, and I am for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, I think it's Height. Is that even close? Is that even close?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I'm a homeowner in the Locally neighborhood, and I certainly support and approve of this development. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I have a just under acre lot in Montana de Oro, and I got another lot just under acre in Casa del Sunrise. And I approve this. I think it'll be a nice community along that stretch of road because it's, right now, it doesn't look that well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeanne Kennedy.
I have a hip thing going, so I don't want to go up there.
Okay.
I am with Mr. Jones. I live in the Kai, and I thoroughly disapprove of that way they're doing it. Where are the coyotes going to go?
Thank you very much. Michael Wood.
I concur with the last statement.
Okay, thank you very much. Michael Ullery? Does that kind of vaguely sound right?
I'm a Peoria-based business owner, and I live in the acre and a half lots, real close to where they're talking about. I do think it'd be a great idea. I support the developer, you know, more homes, more business.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I own two homes in the immediate area, and I have nothing to add, but I do approve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kent Ashton.
I've already given my time to Paul Gilbert.
Oh, okay.
Take it again. And I am opposed, and I live in some of the Sumner Estates, and I don't understand why they're changing this.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Scott Martinson. I've lived out in the area for 15 years. I'm a multi-business owner. I agree with the development. I've worked around these developers for many years, and they do a nice job. They do on and above the call of duty on all their developments. And I think the neighbors will be happy with the final result, so I'm for it.
Thank you very much. Is there any, this is still a public hearing. Is there anyone else in the audience who either didn't dedicate their time to one of the representatives? Or has yet, has already spoken that would like to speak? If there's anybody left who would like to say something. Seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Curly.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Do I get rebuttal?
Pardon me?
Do I get rebuttal?
Sure.
Okay, I'll try to be brief.
Please.
I'm going to cover three or four points very quickly. First, while Taylor's getting this set up, let me deal with the state land piece, because I think that was, that's one of Mr. Gilbert's and I think Mr. Jones's major concerns. Again, the 110 acres that surrounds us, that's the state land parcel, I think that trying to link how the city is going to treat that parcel versus how they're going to be looking at this parcel, I think they're apples and oranges. I'd submit to you that when that applicant comes in on that piece, that applicant's going to be held to a very high standard, because he's going to be having a parcel, 110 acres, that's contiguous to existing rural 43 and rural 35 zoning. And that applicant's going to have to do what a responsible applicant does, and that is, he's going to have to sit down with those adjacent property owners, and he's going to have to match lot lines, he's going to probably have to match lot sizes, he's going to have to deal with single-story versus two stories. But to try to limit the, what the city council's going to do on this piece, which is 300 to 1,700 feet separated from that state land parcel, I think is, it's almost insulting to the city council that the argument that's being forwarded to you is that the city council can't discern the difference between this parcel, which again is a football field, five football fields away from existing development, and a state land piece that's contiguous to existing development. I know this council, I know how the council's acting, I know the parcels and the sensitivity that the city has shown when a property comes in that's contiguous to existing development. But to say that somehow the approval of this case is going to dictate what's going to happen on the state land piece is just not true. This is a graphic, which I think is pretty telling. I sometimes don't think the city council and the city of Peoria get enough credit for this. This exhibit is basically 18,000 acre lots that are developed within the city of Peoria and that are zoned within the city of Peoria, some of the county. It constitutes about seven square miles of large lot development and large lot zoning. It is perhaps the largest swath of large lot development that I think exists in the valley. I'm unaware of larger swaths that are up in North Scottsdale, which is known for its large lot areas. But this, I think, constitutes a real devotion that the city has had to protecting large lots. I would submit that for the reasons that staff and that the planning commission unanimously agree that this particular parcel is sufficiently removed from the existing development, it's subject to different criteria that didn't exist years ago, and hence the recommendation for denial. To the extent that the council wants me to try to rebut some of the general plan arguments that Mr. Gilbert made, I'd be happy to do so. In a nutshell, your staff has very thoroughly gone through the general plan analysis. They've determined that we're in conformance with the general plan. And again, one of the problems with having a very long career like Mr. Gilbert has had is that his Alarvida project does exactly what we're doing. He's zoned over 500 acres in that piece, in those two parcels, to R-16. 500 acres within a mile of here to R-16. And the general plan was for residential low density. The residential low density doesn't have an R-16 zoning category, and it starts at R-18 and above. But in that case, staff correctly, and I invite you to ask staff whether or not they would like to amplify on this, but staff correctly said that the chart dealing with the zoning categories is not a regulatory chart. So, what's good is good, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I'd end, because I know that this has gone on long enough, but Mr. Jones's arguments essentially are an argument that the general plan should never be changed. I mean, the whole reason why we have a general plan process is to go through and look at individual parcels, look at individual circumstances, and make the determination, should the general plan be followed or other sufficient reasons why the general plan should be changed. Well, here, we're not changing the general plan. We're sticking within the zero-to-two designation, going slightly above it. And we think we've made the case. Staff agrees with us, we've made the case. And the planning commission agrees that we've made the case that there's enough uniqueness associated with this project. And no matter how Mr. Gilbert goes through his fuzzy math, 27% of open space is 27% of open space. And I don't think that I have to tell this council that there's very few projects that you've reviewed in the past that provide that amount of open space. And importantly, it's open space that could be developed. That whole six-acre knoll that's out in front, which again, I submit, and I would really trumpet as a benefit to this area, that area is developable. In the first case that we came, the first site plan iteration that we had with staff, it removed that, and we developed that. That's something which we think is a significant, unique feature of this that justifies the slight increase to the 1.36. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions by council? Please use the electronic version so I can make sure. Yeah, Mr. Ames.
Okay, I'm required to talk longer than everyone else talks, so. Yeah, I've interacted a fair amount with both sides in this case over the last week or two. And I've drawn the conclusion that the concern really for the current homeowners in south of this development here is the state land that's going to probably be developed in the near future. And I've made a proposal to my city manager that we not only look at this, but that we have a serious study session and look at workshops to look at all of the areas in the north here that development is occurring, so that we could have a serious discussion. I think we have the general plan, but we have those targets. And why do the targets sometimes go higher, sometimes they don't go up very high? And so, I think the council needs to be ahead of the curve and kind of understand what we're trying to do in a larger sense here. So, I'm going to request that. And I understand, Mayor, you said we're going to have that study session.
At the next meeting.
At our next meeting. And I think we need to look very carefully at that state land that, when it's sold, and it's the same, you know, residential estate, and it is that zero-to-two and a target of one. And although I think if we, even if you do a target of one, you don't always get an acre, do you? Because you have open land and that fits into the equation. So, I'm going to really push that. We're very serious about looking at that, and we understand what some of the homeowners in the area, the concerns are about that. I think the development itself that we're looking at right along Happy Valley, and we've heard, I think it's going to be, a good development's going to look good for the area, and so I don't think it's going to detract from the acre lots really in that sense at all. It'll give a kind of good visual look to the area. But I do, as Mr. Curly has mentioned, there's a concern, as you butt up to other areas that have a larger lot size. And we've got to pay real attention to that and not ignore it. So, and I know I am going to do that in the future. And I think that's what I want to say, and I appreciate everyone who came here and all the comments. And everything that was said was very intelligent and made sense in certain ways, stronger maybe sometimes than others, but they were all good and positive comments. So, I appreciate everyone who is here.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments by council? Ms. Carlat.
I wonder if you can go back for me to a previous slide. It's the one that shows the knoll along Happy Valley Road. There we go. Okay, now, my understanding is that part of the natural open space that will be preserved is this knoll. Chris, is that correct?
Councilman Carlot, the, you're talking about under the desert lands conservation overlay? Yeah, there's certain features. I don't know if this is big enough to qualify as a hillside feature. Typically, it's, you know, it's above a 10% slope for a given area.
No, as part of this development, is that knoll going to stay as it is, preserved as it is?
I'm sorry, I understand the question. Absolutely, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. I know that what was presented this evening talked about on-lot natural open space. And I appreciate that, because from the south, looking north to this development, the on-lot open space would be a nicer view out your back window as you're looking at a new development. However, this area right here, as you can see, maintains the look and feel of the desert, is a natural setback, so that the development is behind it. It preserves the character of the area. The open space, the look and feel that we are all trying to maintain in that northern part of the city, if you will, is not just on-lot open space, it is the preservation of the look and feel of our desert. And this accomplishes that. And so, by taking this open space, which would be a benefit to all of the residents in this area, and putting it in the back lots of the people who live there, is going to take away the benefit from everyone, and I guess, put it closer to the southern portion, but it's, but I believe that it's counterproductive to the enhanced property values and the enhanced open space and look and feel of the desert that we're all wanting to maintain, especially in the northern part of the city. So, if we're looking for a reason to develop in a specific way that preserves who we are as a city and what we believe is important, our priorities, which is our desert, as far as I'm concerned, I think that we need to take this into consideration. It's not just a percentage, it's not just a number of open space. It is a look and feel that is a character, you know, if you will, the heart and soul of who we are there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments from the council? Go ahead, Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question is more out of curiosity, and I guess it would be a question for the attorney, for the developer. I know the attorney for the other side presented an option that they're, not just, not specifically his plot, but that there might have been some middle ground to have 35,000 square foot lots to the south. I was just curious if there's been any talks between the two about if there's any possibility of maybe finding a middle ground? Maybe not just the one he presented to us today, but any reconciliation?
This is the youngest question I've ever had asked of me. This is after 30 years. I didn't think I could have anything new under the sun. Yes, we, the question is, did we look at incorporating 35,000 square foot lots? The answer is yes. One of the problems and the reason why we couldn't do it, and we actually have had this discussion with them as latest today, the opposition, is that the north-south dimension is so limited on this site, and with the knoll, in preserving the knoll, which we think is a very fundamental element of this, there wasn't enough north-south dimension to provide the 35,000 square foot lots and then have the requisite number of lots to the north of that. So, we did look at it. Thank you.
Could we answer the same question?
Sure. You have to hold it to 20 minutes.
Before Mr. Gilbert goes up here, because we've been spending too much time together, I think, excuse me, please, that's a battery, that's a battery. Mr. Gilbert is going to show you a site plan which destroys, destroys a good portion of the open space that we've had. It's an unengineered site plan. We've actually gone through the engineering and looked at it. Thank you. And by the way, what does insere item mean?
I'll tell you.
Tell me afterwards.
Good help's hard to find. I'd like to answer your question, and that is, we admit that we have not done an engineered site plan, but either have they tried to make this work from an engineering point of view either. So, cuts both ways. But I just want Councilwoman Carlot to know that our plan also preserves that very outcropping that you're talking about. What we're proposing allows that outcropping to stay. It just provides a buffer that acts as a precedent for what's going to happen on the state land. So, we preserve that with our compromise proposal as well.
How many homes are in yours here?
Where's Andy? How many homes roughly?
I could count them.
That plan shows between 58 and 60 homes. So, we're not saying that they can't have the, under our compromise, we're not saying they can't have those smaller lots. It's just provide a buffer on the perimeter, and we'll settle for that.
But a lot of them are smaller than 12,000 then?
No. These lots would all be 12,000 or above.
Other questions or comments, council? One more time.
Last one, promise it'll be, it'll be quick.
I can promise you that, too.
Oh, you can? Okay, very cool. Chris, just a quick question. Like you mentioned earlier, the general plan is more of a brush, and it's not specific. And so, I think, you know, obviously, it's voted on, but then the people have spoken tonight as well. So, when it comes to the general plan, I really have no issue with that. My only question is for the SRP easement, and we've heard the word buffer thrown around quite a bit in terms of separation. No matter what happens on that state land, that SRP buffer, I believe it's 230 feet, will always be there to serve as some sort of natural buffer.
Mr. Jelenic, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Could I have a motion? Could I have a second? It's been moved by Ms. Carlat, second by Mr. Patanna. This is 18R rezoning Happy Valley 40, A-3rd Avenue and Happy Valley Road. With a clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Patanna?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ames?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlot?
Yes.
Councilmember Leoni?
Yes.
Mayor Barrett?
Yes. Thank you very much. The next item is 19R, public hearing on liquor licenses for various locations. Please, thank you. Number one is a person-to-person transfer for an onsite all liquor license Series 6 for Trilogy Golf Club at the Stanzia. The second one is a new restaurant liquor license Series 12. Wait a minute. Do you need to take a break? But these are all yeses. These are ridiculous. Okay, once again, 19R liquor licenses for various locations. First one is a person-to-person transfer for on-sale all liquor license Series 6 for Trilogy Golf Club at the Stanzia, located at 12575 West Golf Club Drive. Second one is a new restaurant liquor license Series 12 for Smash Burger at 9918 West Happy Valley Road. The next one is a new restaurant liquor license Series 12 for Osaka Tepanyaki Sushi and Bar at 16049 North Arrowhead Fountain Drive. The next one is sampling privileges to be added to fries, food and drugs, existing off-sale all liquor license Series 9 located at 9245 West Union Hills, 9043 West Olive, 8375 West Deer Valley, 7455 Cactus Road.
Brian Manningly will make a brief presentation.
Thank you. Properties were posted in accordance with Arizona statutes, all reviewing departments recommend approval, all fees were paid and no comments were received from the public.
Okay, at this time I want to make, open a public hearing. This is a public hearing on the liquor licenses that I just mentioned, I don't really want to reread. Would anyone care to step forward and make a comment about the liquor license applications? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Questions or comments from council? Mr. Ames?
No, I had to put my mic.
Oh. Okay, could I have a motion? So moved. Moved by Mr. Ames, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Once again, these are liquor licenses at the various locations that I read before. The clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Patana?
Yes.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Ames?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlot?
Yes.
Councilmember Leoni?
Yes.
Mayor Barrett?
Yes.
Okay, at this time I'm going to take a five-minute break, so we will resume at 9:03. Thank you for your patience. We are going to resume. At this point in time, we're, next, we're going to consider the next two items at the same time, or 20R and 21R, but we will vote upon them separately. R is a public hearing, a minor amendment, Camino Lago Specific Area Plan, and 21R is a public hearing, major amendment to the Meadows Plan Community District, 91st Avenue and Deer Valley Road.
And this will be Chris Hockes making a presentation again.
Thank you, Mayor. Items 20R and 21R, both applications have been filed on behalf of Camino Lago LLC. Item 20R, this is a request to amend the underlying Camino Lago Specific Area Plan. So, Specific Area Plan, this is the general plan for an area of about 1,352 acres. If you look at the graphic, it's identified in the orange, the Camino Lago Specific Area Plan extends all the way down to roughly Lake Pleasant but south of the Walmart Center development. The second request, item 21R, this is a request to amend a portion of the PCD, the Planned Community District zoning for a project called the Meadows. And the Meadows is located within the Camino Lago Specific Plan, but it's specifically identified, if you can, if you can kind of make out the yellow boundary, north of Deer Valley Road, those 694 acres is the Meadows Plan Community District. This case tonight, they're requesting to amend a portion of that zoning case and the area in red, which constitutes 259 acres, but does not include the, it's hard to make out on the map, but it does not include those parcel, or that strip that's adjacent to Pinnacle Peak or adjacent 91st Avenue. That is not part of this request to change this evening. Okay, with regard to the local context, the Meadows Plan Community, again, is 694 acres in size, depicted by the yellow line, as I mentioned. The Meadows is a Planned Community District that was approved by the council in 2008. It's a master planned community that includes eight residential development parcels, a elementary school site that's located within the middle of the project, a future city park site, and then an HOA community center, along with various internal pocket parks and trails. Portions of the Meadows, as you know, are already under construction, including the Merit of Homes development, which is basically southeast corner 95th and Deer Valley, that's under construction, and also the K. Hovnanian Home Development, which is the piece at 97th and Deer Valley, west of Liberty High School. Liberty High School is a little notch in the middle, not part of this development. The area along, as I mentioned, Pinnacle Peak and 91st are not affected by this request. The parcels around it, if you look to the parcels to the north, they're all residential as well as the east. Some portions of that are in the County Island. The County Island is identified in the brown color. If you look at 91st Avenue, there is a portion in the city that is called Starlight, that's a Starlight Estates development. Okay, this graphic illustrates the existing general plan land use and the existing zoning in the area. In a minute, I'll talk about the Specific Area Plan, but what the Specific Area Plan does, it basically provides a more refined level analysis in detail than we might have with the general plan. It serves as the general plan for that area. You can see that the 259 acres, it's identified in the red, that's the affected area from this request tonight. In a minute, I'll talk about that request. They're requesting to amend the land use designations in that area and by virtue of that, they're asking for an additional 366 dwelling units in that area. On the right is the existing zoning. The area in red, again, is the proposed area of change within the Planned Community District. If you look at the strip along 91st, we'll start there. I mentioned the Maricopa County zoning, the area there, it's zoned rural four to three one-acre lots. The area just to the north in the city that's identified in the dark yellow, that's R118, 18,000 square-foot lots. If you look along the Pinnacle Peak, so the other line, the other edge, along the north in the County Island, it's hard to make out those zoning districts, I'll read them for you. One is a one-acre zoning district, to the right is a 35,000, then you have R118 districts in the county that are zoned up there. So when you look at both edges, approximately 50% of the Pinnacle Peak frontage and the 91st Avenue frontage are zoned R118 and have a smaller lot size actually that's proposed here as part of the Meadows, because the strip along Pinnacle Peak and 91st that is unaffected, that's currently zoned, is zoned for 24,000 square-feet lots in the Meadows. This is the Camino Lago Specific Area Plan. Again, I mentioned the purpose of it, it's a more refined level, it extends beyond the Meadows project, certainly. The plan was developed back in 1997 by the State Land Department. They did this in preparation for the sale of land that's occurred since then, and as I mentioned, this was adopted by our city council in 1997. Of course, in this application, the State Land Department, they've provided the consent for the applicant to pursue this amendment. So in looking at the amendment and the affected area, I tried to put a key at the bottom and then identify what the land use is. So if you look at the area of impact, ELR is the state low-density residential, zero to one unit per acre, and then that little notch, I guess, at the northwest corner, that's a darker yellow, that's LMR, low-medium density residential, that's what's there today. What the proposed change is in the Specific Area Plan is that, with the exception of the area that's not impacted along Pinnacle Peak and Lake, and 91st rather, that the next, I guess the next ring of homes in, rather, would be re-designated with the EHR, which is that state high-density residential, 1.1 to 2 units per acre, and then the balance of that area would be LMR, loaded medium-density residential, 2 to 3.59 acres. So you'll note that the designations, as part of a Specific Area Plan, the ranges are a little different than our general plan, but that's because, again, this plan provides a more closer, refined look. This graphic illustrates the existing Planned Community District. Again, this was approved in 2008. That approval, that entitlement, allowed up to 1,508 lots. The lots range in size from 5,000 square feet to 24,000 square feet. And so if you look at the transition in density and lot size, starting at the southwest corner where you see the dark brown, those are the smaller lot sizes, but those are also the areas that are proximate to the Camino Lago Center, that's the major tenant being Walmart. Also, that corner at the northeast corner of Deer Valley and Lake Pleasant Parkway is zoned commercial as well, so they provide land use transition from that. The lot sizes increase as you, as you go to the north and east along the existing edges of Pinnacle Peak and 91st Avenue. So with the proposed change, so this shows the proposed map, the request is to increase the maximum units within the Meadows to 1,874 lots. So again, that's an increase of 366 dwelling units. In line with this change, some of the parcel boundaries changed, shifted and changed a little bit. Within the area of impact that we're talking about this evening, there was additional acreage that's slotted for MRD, basically 10,000 square-foot lots and 7,000 square-foot lots, predominantly clustered around some of the future planned public facilities like the school and the park. The park's shown in green, the school shown in blue. And then as a result of this change, again, the perimeter unaffected, the next ring of lots would be 18,000 square feet, transitioning down to 10,000 square feet, and again, with the 7,000 square feet around the school and park site. The change in open space is an additional seven acres of open space, so there is a positive increase in the amount of open space that's provided in the development. Very quickly, this graphic depicts some of the existing and planned amenities in the project. This includes high-quality entry features, as I mentioned, internal pocket parks that are distributed throughout the development, also an HOA community center, and internal and external trails, including a public equestrian trail, which would be located along Pinnacle Peak Road. If you look at that frontage along Pinnacle Peak Road, there is a 100-foot landscape buffer, that equestrian trail would be available to the public and be located within that corridor there. As we went through the project, of concern noted by some of our citizens was the transition in lot sizes from adjacent communities to the north and east, and the proposed changes to the Meadows. So what this graphic attempts to depict here is it's a cross-section and it shows, it identifies over 500 feet of transition zone between existing residents, so if you look at it to the left, that's the existing residents, either, it could be either north of Pinnacle Peak or east of 91st. Then you have right-of-way separation, then you have a landscape buffer, then you have an area that is slotted for 24,000 square-foot lots, then you have a local street, and then you have an area for 18,000 square-foot lots. Both the 24,000 and the 18,000 square-foot lots are within the estate residential land use category, which of course is what we see on the north and east side. So all in all, you have about 500 feet of separation before you go down to the next land use category and density and character. As you know, we have a citizen participation process, I talked a little bit about it at the last, at the last item. Given the size of this case, we did send notification to a quarter-mile and HOAs within a one-mile radius. There was a neighborhood meeting held in December of last year at Liberty High School, there were 25 attendees. Some of the concerns that... Some of the concerns that were expressed at that meeting and concerned, there was concerns about the decrease in lot sizes and the commensurate increase in density, there was concerns about whether this would result in a possible change to the character in the area, there was concerns particularly about traffic volumes and safety in the area, and 91st Avenue was a recurring road that was discussed. And there was also questions about the existing zoning. What did the zoning in 2008 allow, and why are we changing it, why are we entertaining a change, rather, today? In addition to the neighborhood meeting, the applicant, they also went door-to-door, and they contacted HOAs individually, and the result of this additional outreach, to date, the city has received, and these should be in your packet, but we've received 262 letters of support for this project. We did receive one letter in opposition prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission. This was from an individual that was representing himself as the HOA president of Camino Lago South. However, in that letter, the letter referred more to concerns with park lighting at our southern park along Lake Pleasant Parkway, and it, you know, it didn't appear to indicate anything specific to this proposal in that letter. To address some of the concerns, land use compatibility is assessed and analyzed to ensure the proposed changes are compatible with surrounding areas. The MRD 24, the 24,000 square foot lots, they were retained, again, along both edges to provide a consistent edge. The lots, as I mentioned, they transitioned down, I mentioned going down to 18,000, and then down to 10, and so forth, clustered around planned public facilities. Additionally, we looked at, we talked about the landscape buffers, including the 100-foot landscape buffer along the Pinnacle Peak frontage particularly, that'll provide separation from some of the county islands to the north, which we will also incorporate an equestrian trail in. Talked about the 500-foot of transition buffer from different land use categories. There was also, there will also be some roadway improvements required along 91st and Pinnacle Peak to help alleviate traffic volumes, and this will include two plant, two new planned signals, rather, one shown at 98th and Deer Valley, west of Liberty High School, and the other one at Williams and 91st. This graphic illustrates some of the, some of the high quality entry features and HOA parks within the community, as it currently stands within some of the current zoning. So these should be familiar to you. The item went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, March 20, 2014. Nine people spoke on the request, and some of the same people spoke on the general plan and the zoning request, but it was a total of nine, nine speakers. Four were in opposition citing that the lots were too small, traffic will increase, and that this change will impact the rural character. Five spoke in support. They believe the homes and lot sizes were great, and that they believe that this was a, this was a good development, that the developer has worked hard to identify appropriate transition of lot sizes and an appropriate mix of lights for the area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimously, recommending favorable for both cases. Some of our key findings is that, as a master planned community, we believe the proposal benefits the public interest. It advances development form that we believe is conscious of compatibility, and it maintains the appropriate land use transitions in the area with the buffers and with some of the progression of lot sizes that I've talked about here. We believe it's, you know, one of the goals in the general plan is also to provide a diversity of housing options and housing lifestyle choices. We believe this, this project does that. It provides an expanded mix of moderate lot sizes, particularly in close proximity to school and park sites. And we believe it also provides a more sustainable mix of development, leverages existing infrastructure improvements. These additional residences will support area businesses, and it's always a positive when we get more open space as a result of a change in a zoning case. So for those reasons, staff is recommending approval of item 20R, which is the general plan amendment case, and then item 21R, subject to conditions 1 through 30. Now, we did provide you tonight a, some modifications to stipulation 22, and this pertains to the timing of traffic signals in the area. So we attempted to be a little more, a little more specificity in that, the wording of that, so that's provided with you as well. So our recommendation would include that revised stipulation along with the 1 through 30 that you have. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay. Well, we're still in a public hearing, so I can't do questions right now. We're still in the public hearing. Before I go on, there are 25 speaker request forms that mark themselves as being in favor of the development, but none of them asked to speak. We have four speaker request forms, two of which favor, that requested to speak, two favored the development, and two didn't indicate whether or not they favored or opposed it. So with that, I will call on Ed Bull, who's the representative of the applicant, and given the lack of opposition, you might want to truncate your, your presentation a little bit.
Mayor, members of the council, Ed Bull, 702 East Osburn. Reading your lips, Mayor, I think brevity would be, I hope will be rewarded. We appreciate staff's thorough analysis throughout this process and Chris's very detailed report tonight. We appreciate the Planning Commission's unanimous recommendation for approval, and we also appreciate a number of neighbors who've worked very closely with us and with council members and staff and so on on some issues that arose either prior to or during the Planning Commission hearing, which collectively we've, we've been working on. I can go through a PowerPoint presentation if you want, talking about transitions and buffers and other kinds of things. Chris dealt with all of that. I would ask your permission to simply reserve the opportunity to get into some of that and rebuttal if that need be, because if, if the community who's here is in support, or primarily in support, and with the staff and commission in support, I defer to you all to ask questions or ask me to drill into particular areas. Otherwise, I don't think you need a lengthy sermon from me at this hour of the night. So, we request your approval. We're fine with the stipulations 1 through 30, including the modifications to stipulation 22 on the zoning case, and would ask your council approve accordingly. With that, if I may, I'll reserve time for rebuttal if I need it.
Thank you. First speaker, you have three minutes, Christian Williams.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm a longtime resident of Peoria, and I live about less than a half mile from the community's southwest development named the Meadows. I'd like to voice my support for the density increases in this development that they're requesting in their PAD and their SAP. I'm supportive of these increases because it makes fiscal sense for the city, and it allows for added residence in the area, which helps support our many vacant shopping centers and power centers. When you look around our community, it's very evident that many of our power centers at the four corners of Lake Pleasant and Happy Valley have not fully developed and are vacant. Additionally, with Camino Lago Marketplace being nearly vacant, it makes sense to add more customers to the median area, supporting our tax base. Long-term, I fear that if this area only, of the city, only contains low density, one acre properties, the impact of the Loop 303 west of us could be detrimental to existing retail centers. While I respect and understand why some of my fellow neighbors in the area appreciate and want to continue to only have low density residential, I believe a balance in demand needs to be met. I believe the developer has not only proposed a satisfactory buffer to adjacent land uses, but has built a quality community that will enhance all of our property values and provide public goods such as parks, schools, and trails. Additionally, when you look at the overall market trends, some of the reasons why the market is not recovering to a healthy pace is due in part to the fact that many young professionals, young families, and millennials are not entering the market. I believe with the diverse density of lot sizes in the community, it will begin to offer, offer a strengthened housing market and choices for buyers. While I'm supportive of the overall project, I would ask the developer to consider one item, and that's the name of the community. While I understand that marketing is an important factor to developers, there will be a day when this development is completed, and the developer will leave, and the region will have no unifying identity. When I think about communities across the valley that are memorable and create an identity for the larger city, I think of neighborhoods like Vistancia, Arrowhead Ranch, Nortera, DC Ranch, Desert Ridge, and McCormick Ranch, and Greyhawk, just to name a few. And these neighborhoods consist of many subneighborhoods with different HOAs that have their own distinct character and features, but reference the larger neighborhood they are within. I believe the Meadows, being a part of Camino Lago, should add the Camino Lago name to the signage of the community, or along the edges like 91st and Deer Valley, 99th and Pinnacle Peak, Williams and Lake Pleasant, 98th and Deer Valley, to welcome people to the greater Camino Lago area and giving this side of town an identity. I am aware that existing signage is up for the community in one location, but I believe it would enhance the entire Camino Lago region and set it apart as a destination if the Meadows, if the Meadows at Camino Lago monuments at the edges and entrances, or greater community monuments around. I believe this area has potential to be a destination and a memorable place when Community Southwest builds out the community and leaves. There's already another neighborhood in Peoria called the Meadows, actually on 111th and Northern, that's another reason for that. But I would ask the developer to consider that, and I have talked to them, and they said they would seriously take that into consideration to unify the four neighborhoods and the shopping center that make up Camino Lago. But with that, I extend my full support to this project, and I think it enhances the quality of life within Peoria, accomplishes council goals, and sets Peoria apart as a premier place to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Bali.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is John Bali, I live at 9033 West Country Club Trail, Peoria. I'm across the street from this proposed change in this development. I have here a Learn More About the Meadows brochure, a quality development we can all These minor density shifts help to create a more seamless transition of lot sizes throughout the community, and results in significant improvements to the overall land plan of the Meadows. This was 2007, went through the council. We withdrew any opposition that we had at this time because of that. We've recently met, some of my neighbors and myself, with Mr. Kern, and he was receptive to taking into consideration some of our concerns. One was, the peripheral area you're talking about is not part of this, and he really didn't want to give us a concrete statement that that would stay at 24,000, and then 18. We've already taken the transition, and, and we're moving it from 93rd Avenue now down to about 92nd. I would ask that, I lost my paper, pardon me a minute. You know, we also met with, with our councilman, and, and he, he talked to us, and, and we received a letter, or a copy of a letter that was sent to the city, that said that this peripheral area would remain at 24,000 square feet, and, and it would be a stipulation, basically, and also it would stipulate that would, that there would be single-story houses in that area. I didn't hear anything about that this evening from the developer, so I would, I will support this project if we live by what we got the other day. Thank you very much for your time and your efforts.
Thank you. Last speaker is Troy Hill.
My name is Troy Hill, and I work for a home builder, I work for Heritage Homes, and I support this project. Going back to his comment, from a builder's standpoint on those larger lots, the 24,000 square foot lots, we would build single-story lots. So I think there was an agreement, and that will probably be spoken about later, that they've agreed to keep all those buffer lots to be single-story, like we have done in some of our other communities within the city of Peoria. We consider the city of Peoria an A place, an A submarket, where we want to sell homes, and we want to create neighborhoods, and we want to have a place for our families to live, and we feel that the product mix that Community Southwest has come up with fits our need. So we actually, in the preliminary stages, were involved with helping them come up with this plan, which this would be our phase two for what we're currently building out at Camino Lago. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bull, do you feel compelled to come back? Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that one then. Please come up.
Good evening. My name's Beth Joyce, and I'm sorry I filled out the form, I must have gotten lost in the shuffle. I live also across 91st Avenue in the city section of the area, and one of the things I've heard over and over again with people, you know, agreeing and approving of these developments, is that I'm a business person, there's more roofs on the ground, and things like that, and I want us all to look at North Peoria as the beautiful, beautiful desert that it is, and not with dollar signs in our eyes. And that's just a recurring theme that I've heard over and over again. We have been very involved with this development, and, and met with the developers, and, you know, they've talked to us, they've been really upfront with everything. We finally met with our council member, John Edwards, this last week, and, and he did a lot of work and got information for us, too, and I would like to say that I agree with the proposal, as long as those changes are made to it that we talked about. So thank you all very much for listening and staying up late for us tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. This is still a public hearing, would anyone else care to address this issue that has not spoken before? Seeing then, Mr. Bull.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. First of all, Mr. Bali's absolutely correct. A letter was submitted like this that talks about using the CCNRs as a method to assure that the perimeter lots along 91st and Pinnacle Peak are all limited to a minimum of 24,000 square feet and one story in building height. We do that through CCNRs because those perimeter lots, as you know, along 91st and along Pinnacle Peak, as Chris explained, are not a part of the zoning amendment. This letter and underlying CCNRs were provided, I believe, to staff in their entirety. I'm happy to give a copy to the, to the clerk, or whatever you would like, so it's clear that this letter and the CCNRs, in particular, section 7.26 of the CCNRs, provide that the perimeter lots along 91st and Pinnacle Peak be a minimum of 24,000 square feet, and that the homes along there be one story. I point that out in the context of the importance of this in discussions with neighbors as being a key element, and we want that to be a part of the record. Secondly, with respect to the request that, that Community Southwest consider amending the name of the Meadows, or expanding the name of the Meadows to say something like the Meadows at Camino Lago, gentleman's absolutely correct, Mike Kern was asked to consider that a week or so ago, as I recall. He assured people that he would consider that, he is considering that. It's because of marketing and other legal issues, it's, it's more than just saying, well, puts more words on a sign, but Mike gave people as word he'd consider it, they're doing that, and they will make a decision as promptly as they can. We understand the request, and it's being considered. If there's other things that we need to discuss with respect to buffers or anything like that, we're happy to do it, but there's been a lot of issues worked on by staff, by the council, the councilman in our district, of course, and by a number of neighbors. I don't think you need me to reply those furrows, but I do defer to you for your questions or additional details if you need them from us tonight. Otherwise, we request your approval.
Okay, I would ask that you give the CCNR letter to the clerk, so that's part of the record.
Okay, I will do that.
Council, questions or comments? Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have any questions, but I just wanted to make a comment to Southwest Community Services, Ed, Brian, Mike.
I think this is where I sit down.
You can sit down, I guess. You guys have done a phenomenal job in working and communicating with, with the community. I've had the meeting, I did have a meeting a week ago with the residents that spoke, and they had some concerns, and, and I brought those concerns to you folks, and right away, along with staff, you guys addressed those concerns and were able to identify them, and to make, rest assured, make sure that they were going to be addressed and not going to be issues. The buffer zone, the 24,000 size lots, the single story, the signal at Williams. So again, I want to commend you guys for doing a phenomenal job, reaching out. This is what, this is what it's about. When, when neighbors have concerns, it's not just them having to come to me and saying, "Help us." You guys willingly came out and, and offered to help, and I appreciate all the work that you guys did, as well as staff, so I wholeheartedly support this, this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ames.
Yeah, this is just a question for Chris, and that is-
Yeah, this is just a question for Chris, and that specific area plan, you kind of changed the estate range, but I didn't see any target number there. Is there a target number as well, or did I just miss that?
Vice Mayor Ames, so the specific area plan has a range, there is no target within that specific area plan. So it's just a range.
Just a range, okay.
Right.
Go to the top of the range, or you can...
Pardon me?
You can go to the top of the range or the bottom of the range, and that's it?
Well, that parcel has to be a unit count within that range, but there's no target. So it's a little different than our general plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none? This is 20R, Minor Amendment, Camino Lago Specific Area Plan. Could I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mr. Ames. Would you please hold the council?
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Patena?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ames?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlott?
Yes.
Councilmember Leoni?
Yes.
Mayor Barrett?
Yes. Next is 21R, Major Amendment to the Meadows Plan, District 91st Avenue and Deer Valley Road. Could I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mr. Ames. Would the clerk please hold council?
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Patena?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ames?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlott?
Yes.
Councilmember Leoni?
Yes.
Mayor Barrett?
Yes. Thank you very much. Next up is 22R, Contracts Dental Insurance.
Julia Ayers, our Human Resources Director, will make a brief presentation on this item.
You might want to wait a minute.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back in 2010, the city created the Employee Benefits Trust Board, who was tasked with overseeing the city's medical benefits program. The first recommendation I have for you this evening is to consider moving our dental benefits also underneath the Employee Benefits Trust Board. This would allow the better coordination of our medical and dental programs and flexibility in designing those programs moving forward. The timing is such that our current dental contracts expire on June 30th of this year, and with the assistance of Materials Management, we have gone out to bid. As part of this bid, we also invited self-insurance options for our PPO product. Self-insurance allows the city more control over the program and typically reduces our overhead expenses. We received several competitive bids for dental coverage, which has been reviewed by a committee comprised of city employees and our labor representatives. It is our recommendation to award dental contracts to United Concordia as a self-insured PPO and to Assurant Dental for our prepaid plan. This recommendation for self-insurance under the PPO will save the city approximately $67,000 per year, and employees with these two options would continue with their same providers, as these are our current providers that we have here at the city. And so with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Ames.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ames, seconded by Mr. Edwards. This is 22R, Contracts Dental Insurance. Would you please hold the council?
Councilmember Patena?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ames?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlott?
Yes.
Councilmember Leoni?
Yes.
Mayor Barrett?
Yes. Thank you very much. Next is 23R, Adoption Tentative Budget for Fiscal Year 2015.
Katie Gregory, our Deputy Director of Finance and Budget, will make a brief presentation on this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are bringing forward, for council approval, the Fiscal Year 15 Tentative Budget. And this is the first in our series of steps for the formal adoption of the budget. And as you're aware, the tentative budget sets the maximum appropriation for the Fiscal Year 15. Developing a recommended budget is a collaborative effort. It includes significant input from departments, but also relies on and requires the direction from council. Throughout the year, council has been provided with a number of updates on the city's financial condition, economic development initiatives, and growth-related policies. In addition, the council has had an opportunity to fully review the proposed 2015 budget at the council budget workshops in late March. At these meetings, council provided feedback on a number of areas and also identified some changes to the Fiscal Year 15 budget, such as adding some one-time funding to support special events. Additionally, the council provided direction for staff to bring two items, a police staffing analysis and a fire paramedic training evaluation, back to study sessions later in the fiscal year for further discussion. I must have moved it along too quickly, sorry. As a quick recap, budgeting in Peoria can be separated into two different components, each with a different purpose and process. The operating budget is what supports the day-to-day operations and activities of the city, and is largely supported through taxes, user fees, and rates. The capital budget, which is, which provides funding for large one-time capital projects such as new roadways and repairs, water and wastewater pipes, and facilities, trails, and parks, these projects are supported by one-time funding such as bonds, impact fees, and in the case of water and wastewater utility rates. The approval of the tentative budget includes the approval of the first year of the capital Our approach to the, excuse me, the approval of the final budget includes the approval of the first year of the capital program, sorry. Our approach to the Fiscal Year 15 budget was to develop a thoughtful spending plan that is responsive to your council goals and maintains our short and long-term financial stability. Departments reviewed their service activities and service levels and focused on basic services that meet our current commitments while making the appropriate adjustments to maximize efficiency throughout our operations. So while this budget continues to be generally a hold-the-line budget, it does include a few additions in key areas that address council goals and maintain our service levels. Efficiency is a significant focus for departments, and they have met the challenge of managing within their available resources through thoughtful planning, appropriate use of technology, and a regular review of performance data and operating trends. The two largest categories in the budget are the operating and capital budgets. The total operating budget, which is in the green on this slide, is approximately 50% of the total at $238 million. A little over half of that is the city's general fund at $123 million. The capital budget for Fiscal Year 15 totals $145 million, and the other 19% is split evenly between debt servicing contingency at $45 million and $42.4 million, respectively. In Peoria, we budget contingency appropriation in various funds to give us the budget authority to spend on unforeseen items, emergencies, or mid-year budget adjustments, and only the city council has the authority to approve the use of this contingency. This slide just shows the budget history over the past 10 years. The total recommended budget for 2015 is $470 million. This is less than half of a percent of an increase over last year's approved budget. Some important takeaways for the budget as it's been recommended is that this is a truly balanced budget that once again keeps our principles intact and maintains our services. It includes a sales tax reduction on the food for home consumption, and there are no increases in property tax or utility rates. Overall, this budget ensures that we address important organizational objectives such as customer service, economic development, and maintaining quality services for our citizens. So as this evening begins the formal budget process, tonight we're asking council to adopt the 2015 Tentative Budget, and again, this is to set that maximum expenditure limitation for the year. Staff plans to bring forward the final budget for public hearing and adoption on May 20th, and at that same evening, we'll hold a public hearing on the property tax levy to be formally adopted by council on June 17th. With that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none? Ms. Carlott?
Yes. I just want to commend you on this budget. I mean, it took a long time to get to this point. I know at the onset of it, you know, we had some concerns because there were so many pent-up needs stemming from many years of the economic downturn, and, you know, the question was, we've got a lot of things that we need, but just very little revenues, and so it was going to take a lot of restraint to come up with a really great budget like we have. But you did it, and, you know, I can't tell you how much I appreciate it. And that graph where it showed the various budget in the different years, it's a testament to how the city of Peoria lives within its means. We have a history of being prudent and fiscally conservative and sound and staying within the principles of sound financial management, and that's evident. And I think that we're still able to deliver all of our services in a high-quality way, and at the same time, not overspend. So thank you very much, I appreciate it, and I will certainly be voting on this budget.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments? Seeing none? This is 23R, Adoption Tentative Budget for Fiscal Year 2015. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Ames, seconded by Ms. Carlott. Would you please hold the council?
Councilmember Patena?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ames?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlott?
Yes.
Councilmember Leoni?
Yes.
Mayor Barrett?
Yes. Next is 24R, Fiscal Years 2015 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program.
Katie, one presentation on this one, too.
It's a 10-year balanced plan that addresses projects that are needed or will be needed over a broad spectrum of areas. It's a dynamic plan in which each year, a great deal of effort is put into updating to ensure that not only our critical needs are being met, but also that the cost, scope, and timing of all projects are coordinated throughout the city. The city staff identify and prioritize projects, estimate project costs, determine available resources, balance projects' requests within the available resources, and ultimately submit a recommended program to the city council. One key consideration is the city's ability to fund the ongoing operations and maintenance costs associated with each project, and as such, projected operating impacts are incorporated into our long-term forecasts each year. The Capital Improvement Program has proven to be a year-round process. However, it's most involved between September, when staff estimates and submits projects, through March, when the city manager submits a recommended plan for council review. Not only does the capital program provide a schedule of planned improvements, it also identifies funding sources for the projects over the entire 10-year period. Tonight, we're asking council to adopt the proposed Fiscal Year 15 through Fiscal Year 24 Capital Improvement Program. Some key themes that went into developing this year's program included incorporating projects that address your council policy goals. Going forward, more funds will be invested, such as, excuse me, economic development, strengthening our neighborhoods, including our Community Works program, providing for quality parks and open space, and planning and developing city infrastructure as we go forward and new growth occurs in the city. It also includes some investing into both preserving and maintaining our existing infrastructure, and delivering a full project that is well-coordinated and meets all of our development standards. As mentioned before, this is a balanced plan because we've identified funding sources based on reliable revenues to support both the one-time capital investments, as well as the ongoing operating costs for every project in the 10-year program. The 10-Year Capital Improvement Program totals $598 million, and as you can see, there are multiple funding sources that support this plan. In the turquoise on here is the operating funds, which include the use of one-time fund balance to support targeted improvements within the community. This includes projects like the Streets Maintenance Program, Community Works projects, and the Sports Complex improvements. The purple slice on there is our development impact fees, and those are used to finance large growth-related projects. This amount also reflects a number of impact fee credit obligations and infrastructure dedications made by major developments. And as you can see, we continue to utilize GO bonds for a significant portion of our general government projects, and GO bonds are paid through the city's secondary property tax. Peoria's plan addresses projects that are needed or will be needed across a number of different category types. The largest category of improvements is water, where we've added additional treatment capacity to serve the growing needs of our water in Northern Peoria. Streets is another significant category, reflecting a series of important roadway and intersection improvements planned over the next several years, including the completion of Lake Pleasant Parkway and the half-street improvements at 103rd Avenue between Northern and Olive. The city is making significant investments in the quality of life amenities for our citizens. Included in this plan is a third community park located in Northern Peoria and a number of important improvements to the Peoria Sports Complex. This chart here just shows from year to year our 10-year capital program. As you can see, the change in our overall economy and assessed values from year to year has a major effect on the 10-year capital planning. Throughout it all, we've been able to maintain a healthy capital program that addresses those community needs without making any adjustment to the property tax rate. Tonight, we're asking the council to adopt the proposed Fiscal Year 15 through 24 Capital Plan, and then on May 20th, we will be asking council to approve the first year of the capital plan as part of the overall FY15 adopted budget. With that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments by the council? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Carlott, seconded by Mr. Ames. This is 24R, Fiscal Years 2015 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program. Please hold the council.
Councilmember Patena?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ames?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlott?
Yes.
Councilmember Leoni?
Yes.
And Mayor Barrett?
Yes. Thank you. Next up is 25R, Reconsideration of Council Action, Adoption of Resolution 2014-44, Agenda Item 20R, April 1, 2014.
And Tammy Shreve will answer questions. She made the staff recommendation and presentation at the last meeting on this item.
The proposed charter amendment authorizes three members of the city council to request an item be placed on a council agenda or a special meeting agenda. Currently, it takes four members of the council, the majority, to place an item on the agenda. We first reviewed this issue at the Policy and Appointment Subcommittee on February 11th. Thank you.
Tammy, excuse me just a minute. Steve has asked for a procedural amendment to the flow of things here, so just...
Mayor, you have first, the first part is whether there's going to be a reconsideration of this item. If there's a reconsideration of the item, then you'll get to the floor on the substance of the item. If there's no reconsideration of the item, then you never get to the floor on the item. So you really need to address first the question of reconsideration of the item, because that doesn't happen. You don't get to that.
Could I have a motion to, for reconsideration of the Council Action Adoption Resolution 2014 through 44, Agenda Item 20R, April 1, 2014?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Ms. Patena. You're back.
Now, Mayor, the only thing you're going to discuss on this item is whether to reconsider it, and then you take the vote on this. Depending on the vote on this, we'll get to whether you need to discuss the presentation from Ms. Shreve's, because this is a presidential motion.
Oh, so we take...
You have to vote on this first.
We vote on this now.
Yes, you just vote on this.
So you can't ask questions until after vote?
Apparently not, right?
I'm sorry.
So you can't ask a question until after the vote?
Wait, let me see if I can help clarify this. We are going to vote now to...
To reconsider the council action. A yes vote is in favor, the motion to reconsider. If you vote yes, you're voting to reconsider the council action. If you vote no, you are voting not to reconsider the council action, and based on that vote, if the motion passes, you'll get to the substantive discussion of this item. If the motion fails, then we're done, you move on.
Right, but after, assuming it's approved, you just say, assuming it's approved, we reconsider it, then we revote on it?
Then you vote again on the item.
So the first vote is to whether or not we're going to talk about it?
Whether you're going to reconsider it and talk about it.
Okay. Everybody clear on that? Go ahead and hold the council.
Councilmember Patena?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ames?
No.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlott?
Yes.
Councilmember Leoni?
No.
Mayor Barrett?
Yes.
Okay, now you go into the second.
Thank you. Again, this proposed amendment is to authorize three members of the council that they requested an item be placed on the regular or a special agenda. Currently, there are four members of the council, it needs four members of the council majority to be placed on an agenda item. The history of this proposal is first heard at the Policy and Appointment Subcommittee on February 11th. on February 11th, and then by the full council study, by the full council in a study session on March 25th, and at the council meeting on April 1st. And again, we'll be discussing it tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Tammy, maybe this is for Steve. Can you explain a little more in detail if a council member has something that they want to bring to an agenda item? Under the, under the, the old proposal, it was they'd take it to the clerk, and the clerk would poll the council members. Is that correct?
Yes, under the, the current process in the charter provides that a council member can request the mayor to put an item on the agenda, that three council members can request the mayor to put an item on the agenda, or upon written request of four council members, the clerk will automatically call a special meeting, and an item will be placed on the agenda. Now, traditionally, I can tell you throughout my tenure in Peoria, we have never required that be done in a true special meeting. It's just simply done as an additional item to the regular agenda. But basically, that's the current process in the Peoria City Charter.
Okay. Trying to formulate my question, I apologize. I'm having a little bit of trouble understanding, and that's why I asked for reconsideration, is because I just wasn't 100% clear. If two council members have the same thing, can they bring it together? What I'm concerned about is, can you describe more in detail the violation of open meeting laws or serial communications? Because that's what's concerning to me.
Mayor, members of council, the concern is, is that if four council members agree to do an official action, and there's no notice, there's no agenda, there's no formal meeting, that would violate the Open Meetings Act. Now, the way that we've tried to avoid doing this throughout has been that the council members have been urged simply to sign their name to a letter and not talk about it, and just provide the letter to the clerk. The, obviously, the issue there is whether that suffices for purposes of the Open Meetings Law, I think, is a very, has always been a very difficult question. So that's, that's been the issue, has been the fact that our charter has this provision of four people requesting a meeting, and that constitutes a majority of council.
Thank you.
I mean, if you're satisfied, Councilman Edwards.
I think I am right now.
Okay, because I.
Don't let me learn more.
Yeah, exactly.
Ms. Carlet?
So, under our current rules, if, if there were, if somebody went to the clerk's office and said, "I wanted to bring something forward," and wrote it down, the clerk could then send that out, that message out to the rest of the council, saying, "This is here for, for your consideration. If you would like this to be on the agenda, please come and sign this independently." Then there would be no violation of the Open Meeting Law. Is that correct?
Councilmember Carlet, that's the item that was brought to you, and that would, I believe, solve that problem, because the clerk would be in control of the process, and individuals could then contact the clerk and, versus the process that's currently provided for in the charter. And so that would be coming back to the council based on your direction. And as we indicated to you, the council, previously, I believe that will solve the Open Meetings Law issue.
So that's simply an administrative change, an administrative change that allows us to not have a problem that needs to be solved by putting something on the ballot. Is that correct?
Yes, this, the proposed ordinance, as we mentioned to you, and that came, I believe it was April 1, and Mr. Berg presented that on my behalf, that is, in our opinion, that will solve the Open Meetings Law problem. Assuming council adopts that, the Open Meetings Law issue, for my concern as the city attorney, I believe will be solved.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Ames?
And what you just described isn't nothing new, because I know that's been done at least once when I've been here. But, you know, why should we have this rigorous requirement? And you're not sure if you're talking to one, two, or three people. Most cities have either two, some have three. People can request that the mayor put something on the ballot, if, if the mayor doesn't when he's just, say, requested by, by one person. And so I don't see a problem with this. This is a kind of very democratic way. Like I said, we all represent different districts, and if we want to have something considered, we should be able to maybe see if there's another council member, I guess this case, two, that would be interested in doing that, and then we, so indicate that we want that. I mean, that's a much more open and easy way of moving forward, so everyone gets a chance to speak their, their voice.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Patena?
Thank you, Mayor. When we had this at the subcommittee level, as I said before, I actually voted for this to come out of the subcommittee and be presented to the full council. But when Mr. Kemp, and the issue for me was a breach of the open meeting law. When Mr. Kemp brought it back, or Mr. Berg brought it back at one of our study sessions, he explained that this workaround would be beneficial, and that it would not breach the open meeting law. So I'm, I'm in favor of leaving it just like it is. It's the majority, and I, and I think that's the democratic way of doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? I'm going to ask you to help me with the motion.
Yes.
How should the motion be?
Mayor, council, the motion before you is to adopt resolution, which was formerly resolution 2014-44. And a yes vote is to adopt a resolution. A no vote is to not adopt a resolution. Adoption of the resolution would submit a charter amendment to the qualified electors of the city at the August 26, 2014 election. So if you want to submit the charter amendment, vote yes. If you don't want to submit the charter amendment, vote no.
Thank you very much. Is everybody clear on that? If you vote yes, you're saying put it on the ballot. If you vote no, then we remain with the system we have. Correct?
That's correct. Yes submits, no doesn't.
Please poll the council.
So we're really, it's like saying yes, and there were enough yeses last time, so we're doing it again. Yes, okay.
Poll the council.
You need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, the motion is to adopt the submission of an amendment to the, to the Peoria City Charter for the general.
Submitting a charter amendment to the qualified electors, which was resolution 2014-44.
Okay. Correct? That's the motion. Could I have somebody adopt that motion?
So moved.
Okay. I'm going to give it to Mr. Edwards.
Second.
Second, Mr. Patena. Now you can go ahead and poll the council.
Councilmember Patena.
No.
Vice Mayor Ames.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlot.
Okay, wait, excuse me. I need to understand, a no vote means?
It doesn't go to the ballot.
Doesn't go to the ballot. Okay, thank you. No.
Councilmember Leoni.
Okay, yes.
And Mayor Barrett.
No.
It's a tie vote.
Madam Clerk, what was the vote?
We have a tie vote.
Okay, a tie is the motion does not pass, a 3-3 tie, the motion does not pass.
So it doesn't go?
It doesn't go, because we have a 3-3 tie, and.
So the motion fails.
The, it takes, it takes a majority, if you had a 4-3 council, but with a 3-3 tie, a tie is essentially the motion does not pass under Robert's rules.
So it's not going to the?
So it would not go to the voters because of a 3-3 tie.
Thank you. Okay, next up is call of the public on non-agenda items. I have no request to speak. I think we've done enough of that tonight. And now it's reports from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett. The first two items under my reports will be presented by John Sefton, our Community Services Director.
Good evening, mayor and council, and Happy Earth Day. I get to talk a little bit about a few events. All month long, the city of Peoria has been throwing a party for the planet. Our city team has been offering a myriad of ways that our citizens can help Mother Earth and learn as our collective actions can help make Peoria the very best place to live. From the ongoing bulk trash pickups and hazardous waste collections by Public Works, to the prescription pill drop-offs at the police department, the entire team has had a role in putting on this party for the planet. Community Service is very proud to partner with the city of Glendale and SRP to offer this year's river and trails cleanup this Saturday, April 26. At 7:00 AM, we will meet at the west side of the Community Church of Joy, which is at 75th Avenue and Rose Garden. Head west, and you won't be able to miss us from the light. Join us for an early pancake breakfast sponsored by the Peoria Firefighters Charities before heading out to tackle the trash. And at the same time, 7:00 AM on Saturday morning, the Peoria Arbor Day Celebration will also be planned at the 81st and Oribe, which is south of 81st and the Beardsley Roundabout, right near the River Trail. You'll be able to enjoy the mayor's proclamation for Arbor Day, which celebrates and sustains Peoria's sixth year as being recognized as a Tree City USA community. Special thanks to our Arbor Day partners, Peoria Sunset Lions Club and CareScape, the city's right-of-way landscape contractor. The Lions Club has donated the trees and the labor to plant, and CareScape has donated the irrigation and the labor to handle the hard digs, so the holes are a little easier to dig with the shovels.
And some of us thank you for that.
It'll work out really well. And again, the Sunset Lions Club has been a longtime partner in our Arbor Day Celebration. But, look, hey, the day's not over. At 7 o'clock in the morning on Saturday, at 7:30 PM, the Green Screen Film, Green Screen Film Fest will be held here at Centennial Plaza at City Hall Campus. We invite everyone out to enjoy a showing of The Day After Tomorrow, the movie. It's a thriller set around the worldwide storm that sends the planet into a new ice age, just in time for our summer. We want the family to bring out blankets and have a good time. We'll have hot dogs and all kinds of ice cream and food and fun, so it's an opportunity for everybody to get together here. That's all happening this Saturday, and you can find out more at peoriaaz.gov/earthday. And there's the picture for The Day After Tomorrow.
Sort of an anti-climate change movie.
It's anti-climate change, exactly. And it is actually hard to believe that May is just around the corner, and what better way to celebrate than another Park Fest? Our Park Fest events have been absolutely wonderful, and this is our fourth in the series for the year. The Neighborhood Event is set for Saturday, May 3, 9 to noon, at Terramar Park up north at 6900 West Happy Valley Road, featuring a splashy adventure with water activities, food, interactive inflatables, and so much more. Bring the lawn chairs, come out and have a great time. That's Saturday, May 3, Terramar Park for Park Fest. Thank you.
We can always count on you to be enthusiastic, Chad. Just a couple other quick items. You'll note in your packet, we have been awarded the Clean Air Champion Award by the state of Arizona for our efforts in environmental stewardship and clean air. And the last thing I would mention is Tammy Shreve was just presenting on the last item, and you'll note from the packet material that Tammy has been appointed by the governor to the Arizona Board of Psychologist Examiners. Congratulations, Tammy.
Does that mean she's going to, I know right now, yeah, I know right now that she manages all the assistance to the council?
Yeah.
Is she going to extend that to the council?
I promise to make no comment about her appointment, other than to congratulate her, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Reports from the city council, we'll start with Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing, this Thursday is Youth Government Day, and Peoria's Youth Advisory Board has been excited about it. We anticipate a pretty big involvement from the local high schools. It's a great opportunity, and we're excited to show our peers what you all do here at City Hall. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leoni?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, if I can speak. On April 2nd, it's the second one I went to, was the Youth Partner Network meeting at Rio Vista. It was great, the youth kids put it on, there was a lot of great speakers there, and I just hope they keep this thing going on. It's, you get a lot of good information, and I want to congratulate the youth advisory group for putting this on. On April 5th, on Pioneer Day, they had a 5K family walk and run and bicycle, and I shot the gun off three times for the race to start, and I'm glad that Lieutenant Steele was standing beside me, because I thought somebody was going to call 911. Next thing I know, I'd be having myself in handcuffs. But it was a great, it was a great run, and hopefully that they will keep this going on. Also, on the same day, they had the art festival, and they had live music, and they had food, bouncing play area for the kids. It was just great, and that was from 8 to 5 at Old Town Peoria. Everything turned out real great over there, and we had a lot of people there. The 19th Easter Egg Hunt was great, they had about 5,000 to 7,000 people there. It was so crowded, and my daughter went there with the kids, and it was so crowded that she'd have to wait to get in. So there was a lot of events around Peoria, so she went someplace else, but it was a great event, and it's one of the big events that we have in Peoria, is the Easter Egg Hunt. Dolly Sanchez. I think I'm losing my voice. Anyway, on the 26th, we're having a Scotland Yard Park, we're going to have an event there. It's going to be free hot dogs, cokes, water, popcorn, and it's going to be jumping balloons there for the kids. So, so bring the kids on down and enjoy yourself. Thank you, God bless each and every one of you, and God bless America.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Carlet?
Thank you. You know, the Dolly Sanchez Easter Egg Hunt, it's, it's free to everyone in the city of Peoria, and Dolly Sanchez was actually an employee of the city of Peoria. She worked for the Parks and Rec Department, and one day she said, "We're not doing enough for the kids, let's have an Easter Egg Hunt." And she started, you know, hard-boiling eggs and hiding them, and it grew, and it grew, and it grew. And to this day, everyone in her family comes in from all over the country and helps out and volunteers at that event every single year in the city of Peoria. I mean, that's just an amazing testament, not only to how the city of Peoria employees are treated, and how valuable they think they are and they find their city, but how that, that goes from generation to generation to generation of serving the citizens. I mean, it's just an amazing testament to who we are as a city. I took my granddaughter there for the first time, and she was a little scared of the Easter Bunny, but other than that, she got lots of candy and was very happy. I mean, it's just a tremendous event and one of many great events in this great city we live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. On the 14th, I had the opportunity, along with Councilman Carlet and Patena, to attend the ribbon-cutting for the new Tessa Road out in Ventana Lakes. It was a 10-year culmination of a project finally complete, and now we just need to make sure that we get as many trucks, get the knowledge out there, to let them know that that road is open, and, and to try to staff as much as possible, staff at Beardsley, and to get onto, onto the new road. I know the residents would be happy if you, if they would do that, so I'll be working hard with getting the communication out there to use that road. On the 19th, I also attended the Easter Egg Hunt, and I was there last year, and it just seems to be growing every year, and I had a great opportunity to spend a lot of time with, with the family and throwing candy out. And like Kathy said, three generations of family, and they don't look at it as, as a job. The little grandkids, the great-grandkids, thought it was a great opportunity to do community service. So what a great opportunity for, for one family to instill in.
community service, so what a great opportunity for, for one family to instill in all of the generations that are, were there of community service, and I hope that other residents take, take pride in, in doing that, and if, if everybody were just to take a little bit of that and pass it on, do a pay-it-forward program, I think how much better the city would be, I mean, we're already a great city, but we could be even greater if, if people would just take that little extra step. And then the last thing is, I want to invite everybody out on Monday, May 5. We, the city staff is going to be doing a PSP project and a P-83 landscape improvement over at Arizona Broadway Theater at 5 o'clock to 7 o'clock. I encourage everybody to come out and just take a look at the plans that the city staff has spent a lot of time working with the local community, the local residents, to make the P-83 development so much better. We put a lot of time and effort, and we just really want to showcase and show off to you, the residents, of what, what is coming down the road, so please come out if you can to, to see what is going to happen out there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Jacob?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I just want to reinforce and sincere congratulations to Tammy Shreve on her appointment to the Arizona Board of Psychologist Examiners. I think the governor made a great decision. Tammy has done so much for Thomas and I, she helps us out on everything, we could have asked her to go through this entire packet word by word with us, and she would have done it. And so she's helped us achieve our goals, and so it's, it's truly inspiring to see her go on and achieve her goals as well. Again, Tammy, sincere congratulations from all of us. Other than that, Tom, I'm sorry to mention a little bit, that we're having on Thursday, the 24th of April, our Youth Government Day, a little new addition, we're changing it up this year, we're going to have a youth town hall, and so that'll be interesting to see how that plays out. And speaking of town halls, I have, I'm going to, I believe with Councilman Rivera, we're going to a town hall with Senator Jeff Flake tomorrow. I was able to ask him some questions in Washington, DC, and I would, I cannot wait to ask him follow-up questions here back in Arizona. So with that, that's all I have, thank you.
Thanks very much. Patana?
Thank you, Mayor. I also, as Councilmember Edwards said, I had the opportunity to be at the ribbon cutting for the bypass to Ventana Lakes. I would like to commend Councilmember Carlat for taking this on when she first came on city council, and seeing it through, all the way through, through completion. That's a testimony to your strong will, I guess, so congratulations to you. It's a culmination of what can happen when citizens work together with the city, and while it took 10 years, nevertheless, we did get it done. It will be a significant impact on the quality of life for the people that live in Ventana Lakes, and I hope, like John said, that everybody uses that, the trucks use that road as much as they, as they can. On April 4th, I attended a fundraising event for Benavia at Arizona Broadway Theater. It was a tribute to some of the stars or something, and, and the interesting thing is, the volunteers and the staff did, did all the entertainment. It was, it was an extraordinary evening, there were over 360 people attended that event, and it's their biggest fundraiser of the year, and I'm, they raised a lot of money, and it's, as far as I'm concerned, that money is going to one of the premier organizations, social service organizations in the entire state, so it was a good event. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rames?
Yeah, I've attended different events. One very interesting one is Oakwood Elementary School, and the traffic group here in Peoria, works for the city here, they put together a new plan for dropping off all the kids in the morning and picking them up, and wheel through the parking lot, because they've had a lot of troubles there, a lot of illegal parking, slow movement, and it looks like an excellent plan. It was attended by a lot, a lot of the parents, and they're very interested in that, and they applauded it, and it's going to be excellent, so the city does a lot of things that you may not be aware of, so that's one of them. I also was, I kind of acted as the mayor at the multicultural event, being the vice mayor, and introduced some of the acts there, and greeted the people, and got to meet Little Joe, who apparently is just humongous among the Hispanic community as, as, as an entertainer and star. They said it's multi-generational, the older people knew him, and those that were middle-aged, and those that were teenagers, and even the kids, so he continues, is very popular there, so I got to meet him, and he was very, very, he was very exciting and energetic, and more, more than I was up there when I met him, and I shook hands with him. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you very much. I, I just want to mention two things. Number one, I'm a member of the Peoria Sunset Lions Club, we're planting trees on Saturday at 7 o'clock at 81st and Oribe, we're all old people, so anyone out there who's young and energetic, come help us plant those trees, we would very much appreciate it. The second thing is, Saturday night at the, at the sports complex is Relay for Life. I've made this plea every year, this is my charity of choice, all proceeds go to the American Cancer Society, all the money stays in the state. This will be the last chance you'll get to give me a haircut, and I will, they will be doing that about 6:30 p.m. We have a small set of clippers, there's no charge to get into Relay, so it's entirely free. You come in, but if you want some of my hair, you got to fork over a minimum of five bucks, and you can take a swipe. The first swipe is reserved for the youngest cancer survivor that attends the event, and after that, come on down, make some donations, and make me look silly, which is not difficult, I understand, that's okay. It's, if you don't do that, sometime during the evening, it's an overnighter, they'll be there all night, so if you, if you don't come down for the shearing, sometime during the evening, drop by the stadium, step inside, and take a look at what Relay really needs. If you do that, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, just one quick question, is there a higher charge if we can get a shave of the mustache, or?
Well, since you mentioned, yeah, the deal is...
I'm pretty jealous, so that's why I ask.
The deal, well, the deal is, if they raise 5,000, they get the hair, if they raise 10,000, they get the mustache as well. In fact, I'm going to put out a bone, the Vantile Group, which owns Nissan, Infiniti, and the Ford Group, put up 5 grand, and my buddies at Larry Miller also put up 5 grand, so I'm going to be pretty much hairless here next week. With that, we are adjourned, and we reconvene as the Vistancia Community Facilities District Board. With the clerk, please just note the role. First up, first up is the consent agenda, could I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Carlat, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Poll the council.
Board Member Patana?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ames?
Yes.
Board Member Edwards?
Yes.
Board Member Carlat?
Yes.
Board Member Leoni?
Yes.
And Chairperson Barrett?
Yes. Next is 29R, Proposed Budget and Tax Levy Estimates, Fiscal Year 2015, Establish Public Hearing.
Hi, Mayor and Council, Trust Board, Barry Haug, Budget Manager, and tonight, the board is considering the approval of the Fiscal Year 2015, Vistancia's CFD Tenet of Budget and Tax Levy Estimates for the District, and establishing a public hearing date of May 20, 2014, for the budget and tax levy. The proposed budget provides for an operating and capital budget of 27.2 million, which includes 10.1 million in unspent bond proceeds to be carried forward for future capital projects. The budget proposes to maintain the current $2 and 10 cent tax rate for debt service. It anticipates tax to be generated by the annual tax levy at 2.4 million. It estimates that the developer contribution for debt service in the upcoming year to be 3 million, as per the standby contribution agreements, and it identifies the annual debt service requirements for all three outstanding bond issues of the district to be 5.5 million. Staff recommends adoption of Resolution 2014-01 that approves the proposed budget and tax levy estimates for fiscal year 2015. It also establishes a public hearing date of May 20, 2014, on the budget and tax levy. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing then, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Rames, seconded by Ms. Carlat. Would you please poll the council?
Board Member Patana?
We're board. Yes.
Vice Chair Ames?
Yes.
Board Member Edwards?
Yes.
Board Member Carlat?
Yes.
Board Member Leoni?
Yes.
Chairperson Barrett?
Yes. Next is call of the public on non-agenda items, amazingly enough, we don't have any. We are adjourned.
There's no public left.